Good evening, everyone. We're going to begin. It is 11:15. I'm sorry, 11:15? It's 7:11 PM right now. Good evening, everyone. Welcome. Thanks for being here and thank you to everyone viewing remotely. I call to order 11 -- why do I keep saying 11? 7:11 PM. I call to this joint regular meeting of the Mayor, City Council, and Mayor and City Council acting as the successor agency to the redevelopment agency of the city of San Bernardino. We have Pastor Byron Sims from New Kingdom Culture Worship Center who will lead tonight's invocation and Girl Scout Troop Number 446 will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Can you come up to the podium?
Greetings and good day, City Council and City staff and community residents of San Bernardino. Today, I found it fitting to align ourselves with the mission of Jesus found in Isaiah 61 by the prophet Isaiah says, "The Spirit of the sovereign Lord is upon me, for the Lord has anointed me to bring good news to the poor. He has sent me to comfort the brokenhearted and to proclaim the captives will be released and prisoners will be freed. He has sent me to tell those who mourn that the time of the Lord's favor has come and with it, the day of God's anger against their enemies. To all who mourn in Israel or San Bernardino, he will give a crown of beauty for ashes, a joyous blessing instead of mourning, festive praise instead of despair. In their righteousness they will be like great oaks that the Lord has planted for his own glory." Verse 4 says this, "They will rebuild the ancient ruins repairing cities destroyed long ago. They will revive them, though they have been deserted for many generations." God, we thank you for this time of strategy, God, and we thank you, God, that the next moments will be productive. We trust you and we trust that your wisdom will be highlighted and manifested in this meeting. We give this city back to you and we give this staff to you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. The Girl Scouts, are you here? We can have everyone remove their hats. All right, come on. You guys speak into the microphone. Little girls in the front, there we go, ready? One, two, three.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Here.
Councilmember Ibarra.
Present.
Councilmember Figueroa.
Here.
Mayor Protem.
Here.
Councilmember Reynoso will be absent tonight. Councilmember Calvin.
Present.
Councilmember Alexander.
Here.
Mayor Tran.
Here. Thank you. City Attorney, is there anything to report from closed session?
Mayor, council members, and members of the public, we had one closed session concerning the appointment of City Manager and we do not have any reportable action.
Thank you. Before we conduct city business, I would like to declare that as elected leaders of the city, we will endeavor to be respectful to each other, our public, and especially our staff. Our behavior this evening sets the tone for how our residents, business community, and others view our city. We must conduct city business and professionalism and respectful behavior to build trust, credibility, and move our city forward. We shall commit to these values and foster a positive and productive work environment that is conducive to achieving our goals effectively and efficiently. At this moment, public comments will be heard. In-person speakers will be heard first, followed by remote speakers. To address the City Council, each individual must fill out a speaker slip. A speaker slip must be completed and turned into the City Clerk at this time. Only those speaker cards turned into the City Clerk will be allowed to address the City Council. No late cards will be accepted. Each person should state their name for the record. If you require Spanish interpretation, we do have an interpreter on site. Please raise your hand at this time to indicate you will need translation assistance. In addition, we have interpreting listening devices available in the back. Please note that interpreter will be dismissed if we do not receive any request for interpretation by 9:00 PM.
Buenas tardes. Si necesita interpretación en español tenemos un intérprete presente. Por favor, levante la mano en este momento para indicar que requiere servicios. También tenemos aparatos disponibles para escuchar la junta en español. Si no recibimos solicitud para los servicios de interpretación antes de las nueve, la intérprete se retirará. Gracias.
Madam City Clerk, how many speakers do we have tonight?
We have 47.
Thank you. In light of the fact that we have 47 speaker slips to allow adequate time for the City Council to address the city's official business on the agenda this evening, each speaker will be limited to 1 minute and 30 seconds per comment instead of the usual 3 minutes in accordance with Resolution Number 2018-89. Thank you for understanding and cooperation. Madam City Clerk, please call up the speakers.
Todd Hous, Akoma Unity Center, Carmen Gallegos, Georgia, last name L-Y-K-O-U-R-E-T-Z-O-S, John Scholenberger, and Barbara Nidis.
Please state your name.
My name is Todd Hous. I'm with FEMA. FEMA is actually in San Bernardino County as a result of the Governor's request. We're assisting homeowners and renters that incurred any kind of loss from the floods, from the storms, inline winds, ice and storm, or ice and snow. We have a number of different programs from housing assistance to rental assistance. We can also help with individuals who are uninsured or underinsured for their vehicles. So it's important for them to register with FEMA. To register with FEMA to gain assistance will be calling a number of 800-621-3362 to gain assistance from FEMA. And then part of our rental assistance, dental assistance, any kind of losses that people might have occurred from the storms. When they register with FEMA, they are often sent to the SBA, which our SBA partner will discuss that for a little bit. Some of the things FEMA can help with are moving and storage if their access to their property was washed out. FEMA has, we have a quick time, disaster legal assistance, crisis counseling, and disaster unemployment. We're tight on time. I'll give you the phone number for disaster unemployment because the deadline is May 22nd. It's coming up soon. It's 800-300-5616. Crisis counseling, 800-985-5990. I believe I'm out of time.
Please state your name.
Carmen Gallegos. I was here last meeting. I just wanted to address again the ICE source, but also I'm dealing with a lot of people who don't have licenses and doing contracting illegally on the property. I've talked to the property management about it. I'm a renter, but I also am a taxpayer. So whenever I'm calling to the police, I want to let them know they should come out and confirm that these things are going on. But they don't want to do that. They want me to have code enforcement. And I'm like, hey, these people have trashed the whole neighborhood and they've allowed themselves to embed themselves and, you know, working on cars, working on bikes, and then they also invest themselves into the ICE source downtown. So again, I've seen them over there. And all this illegal activity, I don't know if you can do something about it, but it's disturbing me way too many times. Same with fireworks. Thank you for trying to tackle that because that was an ongoing story too. Went from fireworks to downtown burning things. And again, those burnt buildings shouldn't even be there. They should have been addressed a long time ago. And like I said, there's just, you know, a manifest of just bringing the criminal activity and then they plague themselves right into your neighborhood. I'm right next to the field. I registered, I don't know how many fires, but just so you know, I don't know if code enforcement could come to me, find out what they can do, even go there to confirm that they have no contracts. But they don't want to do that. I don't know why. So anyway, so I have to come to you to let you know that. Okay? Code enforcement didn't call me. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
It might be the same people.
Next speaker, please state your name.
Good evening, Mayor Tran, City Council. My name is Jennifer Sakara. I'm the Operations Manager at Akoma Unity Center. First, I'd like to thank you all and the community for allowing us to present our first cohort water education program known as the Drip Squad. Okay? So the Drip Squad is in partnership with the People's Collective for Environmental Justice, UC Riverside, CAPS Expanded Learning, Survival Media Agency, and nonetheless, San Bernardino Municipal Water Department. So we are here today to present to you all the learning experience journey.
Good evening. My name is Emily Voskas, AKA Miss Butterfly. I am actually the youth program leader for the Drip Squad. It's been a huge journey. We've actually been together for 10 months since August and I get to see my students twice a month on Saturdays. And I feel completely honored to be in a place where I'm not only doing, giving the learning, I'm also learning from them as well. And a program like this is so necessary because we talk a lot about a lot of different topics, but most importantly, the biggest thing that I've learned all school year is not to give up on our youth. And I'm really excited for them to share with all of you what they've been learning this entire school year. So thank you so much for having me. Good night.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Caleb Zacharias. I live in San Bernardino. I joined Drip Squad. Drip Squad is a community group that teaches us how to protect and use our water and not to contaminate and poison our air, also our water. Semi trucks and factories are running, their smoke gets into our air, eventually goes into our water system. What I want to change for our community is less damaging industries, also shipping trucks and more fresher water for San Bernardino schools. Also in Dock Club, I learned how to produce quarterly films. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Alani Chapman. I currently attend Aurora Valley High School. I have been a part of Akoma since 2019 and recently joined the Drip Squad. During my experience, I have learned how to test water, how to test water included in our research. I have also learned how to be a producer. And lastly, I have learned how to film a documentary. During the process of testing the water, the water we tested, bottled water and water from different schools, and they contain lead.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Alan Campel. I live in San Bernardino and the reason I joined Drip Squad is because I care for my environment and I want to better help my community. And a thing I learned at Drip Squad is that they build lots of warehouses and they pollute the air and most of that air stays in San Bernardino. And a change I would like in my school is cleaner water. And before Dock Club, I was really shy with public speaking, but now I've built the confidence to speak to you now today.
Hello, my name is Liliana Wilson. I go to Aurora Valley High School. And why I joined the Drip Squad and the Dock Club was to learn more about it because I came in not knowing what it was about. And what I learned about from the Drip Squad was about how air pollution affects our water quality because when we pollute our air, we also pollute our water from the precipitation that falls into our water. So what I would like to see changed is better water quality. And now to speak about the Dock Club and what I learned was how to create a documentary and how there are many parts and steps to make one. This knowledge was helpful to me and the other Drip Squad members as a way of spreading information about our water quality and our community on how it's not just affecting me, but others too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kiana Wilson. I live in the city of San Bernardino. I joined Drip Squad because I thought that it was interesting and I liked to learn new things. In this program, I learned about the importance of water, what it does for us, and most importantly, about the pollution of our air and water. I want to see change. I want clean water, clean air, and a clean environment. Alongside Drip Squad, I was also in the Dock Club. In Dock Club, I learned how to work a camera, how to interview someone properly, and how to control the audio, and much more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Abby Ominali. I go to Aurora Valley High School. The reason why I joined Drip Squad was because I wanted to learn more about the science of water. What I learned from being in Drip Squad was how pollution in the air affects our water. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Nicholas Nelson. I go to San Bernardino. I joined Drip Squad because I wanted to learn about the water quality in my house and in school. I learned about different type, different, I forgot. Different types of water and how to, how it affects health, my health. I, the Drip, the documentary club has taught me how to, how to better work in the camera because I want, I would like to start a, my own business. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, our beautiful scholars, thank you for listening. So tonight, we really want to give a special thank to the San Bernardino Arts and Historical Preservation Commission, make sure I have that correct, for its support of our documentary club and our new expansion into our water education program. We call it the Drip Squad. So through participation in these programs, our scholars have really acquired skill sets that can transfer into the working world of media and in the water industry. In Dock Club, we've learned everything from script writing to a complete production. We've created an array of products from promotional videos to short documentaries. So we're currently in the process of learning how to distribute what we've created in order to showcase our acquired talents. We have watched our scholars grow into confident individuals who are able to present themselves in the classroom and in the boardroom. Participating in Dock Club and Drip Squad have taught our scholars the value of learning through exploration. Through the lens of steam, our scholars grow and harvest gardens, they cook their harvest, they paint murals, they build robots, they create documentaries, and so much more, all through the lens of honoring our ancestors and our community and ourselves.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Thank you so much, scholars. We have future leaders there in the water industry. Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
Georgia Licaretsos. Good evening, I'm gonna chop this up, sorry, but good evening, Honorable Mayor, Council Members, and more importantly, the community members that have taken the time to be here tonight. Recently, a homeless woman reached out on social media for help because she was hungry and being evicted from her spot outside with nowhere else to go and without adequate shelter. I contacted the city about shelter and was told that if there were beds available, she wouldn't be able to take her dog with her and/or none of her belongings. How do we expect these people to transition off the street? Leave everything that they have in this world and abandon their animals, which is against the law, by the way? Or surrender--
Madam City Clerk, I'm sorry. You can continue. Thank you.
Or surrender to the shelter where they will die. This isn't much of a choice and they will refuse to leave them. Where is the consideration that I have been repeatedly asking for in regards to these We lost an opportunity recently when we suddenly closed two parks. And we didn't, did we even inform the local homeless organizations that provide valuable resources to these people at these parks? We did not. You cannot create viable plan without understanding the population of diverse homeless humans. If they do not trust you, your plan will fail and further waste taxpayer dollars. In stating that, I would like to request that the Council add a line item to the next Council meeting agenda for a resolution to create a commission for the homeless. This commission should be filled with those that have been working with the homeless in the field, meaning boots on the ground, and live within our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name.
Hello, my name is Barbara Nidis. I represent the U.S. Small Business Administration, Office of Disaster Recovery and Resilience. I'm here with, I was here with FEMA. They were here helps anybody that suffered from the February 21st and continuing, as they were saying, that's still continuing with the flooding, that's why it's still continuing. So anybody, homeowners, renters, businesses, and nonprofit organizations can receive assistance. For homeowners, they can, if they had suffered damage to their home, they can get up to $200,000 to repair, please physical damage, and $40,000 for personal property, anything that's inside the home and your primary car. This is where the renters come in, they can get up to $40,000. For businesses, they can get up to $2 million for real estate, machinery, equipment, everything that was affected, and an economic injury, disaster, and if they were closed during that timeline and suffered any type of economic loss, this working capital loan is to help them regain their business back. This is also for the nonprofits, also for physical damage, including churches can get that $2 million, and also the economic injury as well, economic injury disaster. It's the same as for physical damages, the same as June 5th with FEMA, and for economic injuries, January 3rd of next year. The interest rates for home loans as low as 2.37%. For businesses, 4.0, and for nonprofits, 2.37. It's 0% interest for one year grace period, and then that's when you begin starting with your low interest rate. We cover deductibles, no closing costs on the loans, and you can apply at disasterloanassistance.sba.gov.
Thank you so much. Next speaker, please state your name.
John Scholenberger. "The wants, the needs, the safety, and the positive quality of life are what keep me up at night on behalf of my constituents." That is a quote directly from the councilperson in the sixth ward, Kimberly Calvin. Kimberly Calvin, I wanted an opportunity to come to this podium tonight and recognize you. You recognize other people and have the heart of the people of San Bernardino and our best interests in mind. Even though you're not my direct councilperson, you care about everybody. You're not, your work with the Akoma Center is helping young people to a positive future. You're an example to young people, young women especially, who are at the cusp of making decisions for the rest of their lives, a positive influence in their lives. You're not beholden to special interests, you're not in the back pocket of other people. Yours was a grassroots effort. You're here on behalf of the people, for the people, and by the people. The sixth ward is very lucky and very blessed to have you. God has called you for such a time as this, Kimberly Calvin. You just keep being you. You're transparent, you're honest, you're forthright, and you don't talk out of the both sides of your mouth. When you say something, you can believe it. I'm proud of you, Kimberly Calvin. Thank you for what you do for us.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
I am Prophet Dominic Antonas. "The problems we face in San Bernardino are mostly because of the raves. The continuous sins have spread out in all directions like circles of dominoes. The land is defiled." Leviticus 18:25 says, "And the land is defiled, therefore I do visit the iniquity thereof upon it, and the land itself vomiteth out her inhabitants." Matthew 15, verse 19, "For out of the heart proceed evil thoughts, murders, adulteries, fornications, thefts, false witnesses, blasphemies." This is what has increased. San Bernardino went bankrupt, economy fails, businesses lost, prostitution, all crime up, human trafficking, murder, suicides, drug and alcoholism up, pollution, homelessness, domestic violence, abortion, street racing, adultery, more wickedness, corruption, greed. It keeps happening over and over because of the iniquity being allowed by the raves. Numbers 35:34 says, "Defile not therefore the land which ye shall inhabit, where an eye dwell, for I, the Lord, dwell among the children of Israel," or San Bernardino. And the Lord has a message for you, Mayor, and the City Council, and everyone here. I love you. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk.
Al Palazzo, Treasurer Ortiz, Richard Rodriguez, Mike Hartley, Christian Tobar, Mirela Denise, Carolina Sanchez, Rocío Aguayo.
Please state your name. Your mic is off, sir.
I just want to share an experience I had in the city this weekend. I know all of you on the dais had important city business and could not attend. My comments are for the people in the audience and the people out there in our community. I went to the Enterprise Building. It's the old historic Andreessen Building and the events that they hosted. I was amazed. That building is going to be the destination in this city. It's the closest thing we have to the Mission Inn. What they have done with that building, it's spectacular. It's stunning. If you haven't seen it, it is 320 Northeast Street, just across from the old Harris Building. They have renovated this building. Ryan, one of the owners, the creative person, taught me something, and I know a lot about San Bernardino history, but I didn't know anything about the Andreessen Building and the person that built it. The two events I went were on the amphitheater roof. They're gonna have a lot of things there, venues. Please have your family events there. Check out the things that are going on. There's not enough time to tell you what they're planning to do. It's fantastic. The list I have is this long. Maybe some other time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
Christian Tobar. My name is Christian Tobar and I am a resident of San Bernardino. Some years ago, I worked with the Wilder Park Neighborhood Association to try to have a green belt and historic site established on Electric Avenue. This was to preserve an interesting part of our local history. The grass parkway on Mountain View Avenue and the empty strip of land on the east side of Electric Avenue were once part of an old right-of-way for a railroad. This rail line was originally built in the early 1900s as an electric trolley line which ran from downtown San Bernardino up to the Arrowhead Hot Springs Hotel. Today, most residents probably have no idea that San Bernardino once had electric trolleys. In addition to passenger service with trolleys, the railway was also used to transport mountain spring water from Arrowhead Springs with trains using tank cars. The water train was a familiar sight in the city for many decades. The rail line to Arrowhead Hot Springs was abandoned in 1960 and today, the track is long gone. However, the old right-of-way where the track once was still exists and is a reminder of an interesting part of our city's history. I have proposed that the vacant land on Electric Avenue could be improved with a landscape trail along with a small display or informational signs designating it as a historic site. And so today, I'm asking if this is something we can do to set up a small display or trail on Electric Avenue. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Next speaker, please state your name.
Treasurer Ortiz. Council, last meeting, the community came to you and said that the parks were being run down because of homelessness. Now, you got the park part right. You went out and you've cleaned, but all we've done is displaced the people that were there to other parts of the city. We didn't actually address homelessness. And right now, there are mentally ill people, we talk about them all the time, that have no avenues or no resources. So I'm coming to you tonight to ask you all to look into Laura's Law. It is the only law available to us that will allow for assisted outpatient treatment to mentally ill people who are caught up in the legal system. I'm asking you to look into this because it has to be adopted by the county of San Bernardino. And I believe as a collective body who really wants to do something about homelessness and mental illness and addressing the true cause and effects, if you guys came together and told the county that we want this to be a resource for us, they will be more apt to do it. They just gave back $4.4 million in homeless funds because they said they didn't have any other projects to really reach out to. This is something that we could use and utilize. Homelessness is not a crime. Being mentally ill and left on the street is probably one of the most inhumane things we can do as humans to other humans. Let us act now. CARES Corp. is tied up, but this is something that's been used up north. It's good, it's good cause and effect. Please look into it. I will send you as much information as I have so that all of you can find what I have and more education to it. It is a real step in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
Richard Rodriguez. I'm not going to bore you with all the homeless thing here because you're getting an earful since last time. And now, once again. But like she said, you just displaced them all. They're all down the Storm drain canal, every, all the way down Highland, all over the place, in the alleys, everywhere, on the sidewalks. So displacing them like you do every time you do this, it's not going to do you any good. You need emergency housing now, not tomorrow, but you need it now. You can't wait 12 months like you're proposing to do. 12 months, a year from now, you're going to have double what you have now. Now, also, I turned in some work orders on the Go app, took some pictures in Sixth Ward up there off of Medical Center in Cajon. Took pictures, sent them in. I don't know who in public works signs them off, but they signed them off, and I went out there to see if they did anything. Well, the concrete piles are still there. Now that the grass and everything had a chance, and the weeds had a chance to overgrow over all this concrete and oil and tires, and there's furniture there. It's an ongoing thing. It's forever. I'm always calling up. But if you're going to sign something off, at least do it. I mean, I turned in some potholes, and they signed them off. And then I went out there on Medical Center. You can't miss them. And they did them after I posted the pictures back up after I showed them that the work order was signed off. So, and I got to wait for this other item. Oh, and this one item, number 13. I don't know why the city clerk doesn't have somebody on your.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right.
Next speaker, please state your name.
Mireya Denise. Thank you, San Bernardino Mayor, City Council members, and community members for the opportunity to speak today. I'm here as a community member and member of Something Better for San Bernardino and the Warehouse Worker Resource Center. And for over two years, Something Better for San Bernardino has been engaging community members, city leaders, in the redevelopment of the Carousel Mall property. Our goal has always been to engage and work alongside with the city to revitalize our downtown, starting with the Carousel Mall property. As you all know, the city received a notice of violation from HCD on March 16 for committing multiple violations of the Surplus Land Act related to the Carousel Mall property. Since then, in the last city council meeting, the mayor and city council voted to terminate the ENA and redo the process again. As the city plans on redoing the process again, we urge the mayor and city council to create an inclusive and transparent process that includes community and labor input in the drafting of a new request for proposals, RFP, for the Carousel Mall. We believe that the only path forward for the Carousel Mall is to ensure, is to ensure that the new request for proposals includes language that is inclusive of at least 25% affordable housing and that future development ensures strong community benefits that prioritizes good-paying jobs, equity, and sustainability. As the city works to amend its mistakes, we request that the city publicly deliberate on the new timeline for redeveloping the Carousel Mall property. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
Mike Hartley. I want to make sure, since we only get a minute and a half to speak, that the council only speaks for a minute and a half each. I am tired of coming down here, prepared to say three minutes' worth of whatever I want to say because I don't care what I'm going to say. I got three minutes. Make sure you only get a minute and a half. Now, I was pretty surprised today. Yesterday, I turned in a CRM for a 40-foot travel trailer in the street. It's been there for about eight months. Weed's growing underneath it. It shocked me because today I went by, and there was a tow truck. Parking enforcement was out there, and they ticketed, and they hauled it away. Great. Okay, that is our parking enforcement. I asked the officer, Officer Angel. I said, "You guys are quick." And she said, "We are." And I said, "Are you reactive or proactive?" "We have to be reactive," she says, "because we only have five officers to cover the whole city." I said, "Well, you know what? Code enforcement has 16, and it takes me two months just to get an acknowledgement." That's pretty damn good for parking enforcement to be out there so quick. I can keep them busy for two weeks just on that one street. Blight is a disease. You understand that? Blight is a disease. If you don't, if you don't treat it, it'll kill you. And I guarantee you, we're on the way for death.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
Carolina Sanchez. Hi, I'm Carolina Sanchez and co-director for Justice B, which is also a part of the Something Better for San Bernardino Coalition. The city of San Bernardino is currently in a housing crisis, and it now faces multiple serious allegations of violating the state housing laws, including both the SLA and the housing element. It has declared homelessness as a state of emergency, and the Carousel Mall redevelopment is a critical opportunity to bring some affordable housing for residents in the city. In order to fix its lawbreaking and to guarantee that Carousel Mall is redeveloped and affordable, with affordable housing and community benefits that our city needs, the city should take a development path that locks in at least 25% affordable housing and a commitment to community benefits at the start. The city has to make clear to everyone that it is on the new path to a strong, with strong and clear commitments to affordability and community benefits, and not just doing the bare minimum. Our goal has always been to engage and work with city leaders to help revitalize our downtown. We see this moment as an opportunity to address urgent housing and economic needs, and so it appears does the state. In its notice to the city, HCD encouraged the city officials to continue having conversations with Something Better for San Bernardino member community groups regarding the project, and we hope this continues to happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
Rocío Aguayo, and I'm going to give my time to Martha Romero. Good evening, City Council. My name is Martha Romero. I'm actually with San Bernardino Airport Community as well as SB4SB. As you know, the city received on March 16 a violation for the Housing Surplus Land Act. One of the main focuses is the fact that not only the carousel is, you know, part of that violation. However, our housing, our housing element in the city of San Bernardino as well as in the city of Highland are suffering. With the gateway specific plan, which is that the redevelopment that is happening is going to affect not only here in San Bernardino, downtown San Bernardino, but as well in that area. We have to come back and maintain focus. We need to get the most that we can out of projects that come to our cities. We have to actually come together. You, as representatives of us, the residents, of your, and your constituents, you guys have to act upon that. Do not let them take advantage of our cities. People here, the residents, don't want to relocate as we actually talked to you guys before many, many times. They love the city. They love San Bernardino. They love Highland. Whatever city, whatever development, do what is right. We need at least, in regards to the Carousel Mall, we need at least 25%. Please give us that. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk?
Kristen Malaby. Robert Lugen. Angela Williams. Martha Bautista. Miguel Rodriguez. Julieta Fuentes. Roque Pelayo. And Fanny Milan.
Okay. Please state your name.
Kristen Malaby. Good evening. I am Kristen Malaby, SoCal Trash Army founder and employed by Healthcare in Action. We are a street medical team, boots on the ground, actively serving our homeless community for the last three months. We are directly integrated with IEHP, Melina, LA Care, and we've been serving the community for three months while the city or any other entity has yet to offer a medical team. I'm asking tonight that you guys recognize this crew of people that are actively doing the work, building relationships and trust within the community. We are currently facing a state of homelessness, as you know, but not only that, we have a mental health crisis, as mentioned. We have a housing crisis, as mentioned. We have a drug use, as we're well aware of. Counsel, we're actively treating these patients that are facing these situations, although it is quite difficult to locate our Tier Ones, which is most at risk of ER and police use because of the current uplift of the parks and encampments. We need a legal tent city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Angela Williams. I am a delegate for Assembly District 50 as well as for the Inland Empire Labor Council, District Bargaining Unit Representative, and a office store for SEIU Local 1000 Bargaining Unit 1. I am here to support my brothers and sisters, and I am here to support my family who resides in San Bernardino County, including my grandchildren. We urge the city council and mayor to create an inclusive, transparent process that includes labor and community input in the drafting of a new request for proposals for the Carousel Mall. We believe the path forward for the Carousel Mall is to ensure that at least 25% of the housing units built on the property are reserved as affordable housing in the future redevelopment. Future development plans must also provide for the community benefits, agreements that prioritize good-paying jobs, sustainability, and equity. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
Yes, my name is Robert R. Lugen. I am a 41-year ironworker, retiree, and I thank you for having me here to be a representative of local 419 workers. We urge the city council and the mayor to create the inclusive and transparent process that includes labor and community input in the drafting of the new request for the proposal, parenthesis, RFP, parenthesis for the Carousel Mall. We ask the new administration and our council members to learn from the mistakes of the past leadership and use this opportunity to clear the strong pathway to resolve this surplus land action violation by meeting and necessaries and desires of our community. I've been a proud member for all those years, for 28 years as a local member of 419. And this will bring us, our trade is our, we're specialists in our trade. I was an instructor for two years for the apprenticeship program. So we don't just put them out there to work and give them a roll of tie wire and a pair of pliers and just go to work. No, we train them, we teach them. Most of them become foremen for the jobs because they're the best of the best. And so I just encourage this council meeting to vote yes on it, and what man is a man if we can't make our city better? Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker? Next speaker, please state your name.
Mi nombre es Miguel Rodriguez. I'm a construction worker. My coworkers and I get together at Home Depot where community people come daily to get our services to better our, our construction and our work. I am here to ask that you please stop giving us a fine and telling us to leave the place where we can get jobs without offering us an alternative. The fines are not a solution, and it's not a good use of resource. When there's a solution in between that we can do, when there's a solution that we can actually do, like, like the way the center where we get together is, if you can offer an alternative for us.
Thank you.
Miguel Rodriguez. Yo soy jornalero. Y mis compañeros y yo nos congregamos en un sitio donde contratistas y personas de la comunidad llegan diariamente requiriendo de nuestros servicios para mejorar de la infraestructura de esta ciudad. Ahora, ahora solo les vengo a pedir que paren los operativos contra nosotros y nuestros compañeros, los vendedores ambulantes y el lugar. La ciudad se enfoca en sus recursos, soluciones de largo plazo, y actualizar los reglamentos de las leyes. Ahora estoy pidiendo aquí para que podrían parar las multas y desalojarnos de nuestro lugar de empleo sin que nos ofrezcan una alternativa de largo plazo. Las multas no son la solución ni un buen uso de recursos cuando hay soluciones de por medio que podemos llevar a cabo como un centro de jornaleros para trabajadores. Gracias.
Gracias. Next speaker, please state your name.
Mi nombre es Martha Bautista, y soy vendedora ambulante por más de ocho años. I'm a street vendor for more than eight years. Ahorita, mi petición es para ver si pueden aprobar un lugar donde nosotros los vendedores podamos trabajar. Right now, I'm asking that you authorize a place for, for us to be placed where we are able to work, whoever is a, a street vendor. Y que, por favor, paren todos los, que desalojan nuestros trabajos, nuestros productos de trabajo, porque cada día nosotros salimos con el miedo de que podamos perder nuestro, lo que invertimos, y es lo que nosotros ocupamos para sobrevivir. And I ask that you stop telling us to leave the place where we work because every day we get up and go to work because that's how we survive. And every day we get up with the fear that we're going to lose what we invested in our business. Ya que si ustedes aprueban un lugar donde nosotros podamos trabajar, esto va a ser un lugar y un gran impacto en nuestras vidas y en nuestras familias. If you authorize a place, a spot where we can set our, our work, it's going to do a great impact on us and our family. Ya que, en mi caso, por ser mamá de mis dos hijos, yo, con este trabajo paso más tiempo con ellos, les dedico más tiempo en sus estudios y no los descuido. In my case, I'm a mother of two, and by doing this job, I spend more, more time with them, helping them with their studies and their homework, and I don't, I don't neglect them. Y les puedo brindar una vida digna aquí en San Bernardino. Gracias. And I can give them a, a good life here in San Bernardino.
Gracias. Next speaker, please state your name.
Hi, good evening. This is Fanny, I'm Fanny Milan. I'm a community organizer with POC. And today, I'm here offering a public comment in memory of Mario Bayron, day laborer from Guatemala who recently died of a heart attack on his way home from work. Bayron was a day laborer and worker leader, very much involved in our campaign for a worker center. It is in his memory that I'm here today, and also to support the emergency ordinance to cease police harassment against day labors and street vendors in our city. The city of San Bernardino has received well over $423.5 million in funding to boost our economy, our local economy, and rebuild stronger communities in response to the pandemic. I would like to remind you all that street vendors and day labors are also part of the same community that you're supposed to serve and protect. It is shameful that despite the passing of SB 972, supporting the rights of street vendors, the city and the police continue to criminalize both street vendors and day labors. Once again, we're here to call on the San Bernardino Police and code enforcement to stop all enforcement operations immediately until the city and community work together to provide permanent solutions such as a worker center. We would love to meet with you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam City Attorney, you had mentioned to me regarding about the public hearing speakers. Is that something that we can move towards at this time? Before we continue the public comments?
If the city council would like, you can because you do have a public hearing scheduled for this evening. You could postpone further comment, take your public hearing, for this evening, you could postpone further comment, take your public hearing, as you might have had members who signed up to attend that public hearing, and then you could return to public comment afterwards.
So we could proceed to that public hearing agenda item?
If you would like to. That would be at the wish of the council.
Council, is there a consensus to move forward to the public hearing at this time? Okay, all right. We're gonna proceed to item number 15. Public hearing regarding solid waste rate increases and resolution adopting rates for solid waste services approving third amendment to the city's exclusive franchise agreement for integrated solid waste collection, processing and disposal services with Bertec Waste Industries Incorporated, and finding the action exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. Welcome to the City of San Bernardino Public Hearing on Proposed Increases to Rates for Solid Waste Services Charges. Before we open the public hearing, I would like to ask for City Attorney to explain the requirement of Proposition 218 governing this public hearing and the proposed adoption of the rates and charges.
Thank you, Mayor. This public hearing this need, this evening was set in compliance with Proposition 218 to ensure maximum transparency to our public, and we've also done so in an abundance of caution. That being said, the city voluntarily subjected the proposed rates to the Prop 218 procedures and does not concede that their applicability to privately provided solid waste services. The city mailed a notice of public hearing to all record owners whose property is subject to the imposition of the proposed rates and charges, and also to all customers of record who are not property owners. The date and time of this public hearing is not less than 45 days after the city mailed the notice, and the purpose of the public hearing is for the City Council to hear all oral testimony and consider all written protest concerning the proposed rates. It is also held to determine whether there is a majority protest to the proposed rates and whether to proceed with the adoption of these rates. Property owners and tenants are not required to provide oral testimony at today's hearing. If you wish, you may simply submit a written protest directly to the city clerk indicating your opposition to the proposed rate increases. However, if you wish your protest to be counted, you must submit a written protest prior to the close of this public hearing tonight. The public hearing will be closed after the City Council has heard and considered all oral testimony on these items, and oral comments made today do not qualify as written protest. If written protests against these proposed rate increases are presented by a majority of the owners of the identified parcels upon which the charges are to be imposed, or tenants directly liable for the payment of the charges, the City Council may not impose the rate increases. If there is no majority protest, the City Council may impose the rate increases. So pursuant to state law governing Proposition 218 and determining whether a majority protest exists, only one written protest per parcel will be counted. Mayor, you can proceed with the public hearing.
Thank you. May we have the staff report, please? Oh, we're gonna open the public hearing at 8:03 PM. For any person wishing to speak on this item, please note that addition to the Prop 218 hearing, this item includes the potential introduction of a resolution to adopt a third amendment to the franchise agreement and solid waste rate increases. Anyone wishing to provide public comment on this resolution should do so at this time as well. After all oral testimony has been heard, the City Council will close the public hearing. Only those written protests submitted prior to the close of the public hearing will be counted. You will be given a maximum of three minutes, so we ask that you keep your comments brief and to the point so that we can allow everyone a chance to speak. Our city clerk will be keeping time for each speaker. You will be notified when you have reached your maximum allowed time. If a previous speaker has already addressed the item you are going to speak on, you are not required to state them as well and have the opportunity to waive your right to speak. To facilitate discussion, any questions from the speakers will not be answered during the public hearing. We will now open, well, already mentioned the opening of the public hearing. So, Madam City Clerk?
Staff has to give their presentation before?
Staff presentation, next.
Yes, could you?
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, council member.
Look, the council, public out there has an opportunity, has had an opportunity to look at the rate hikes over a five-year period, and before the staff gives their presentation, I think the council is pretty aware that there, there isn't a positive sentiment to just these rate increases as they're presented. So before we even go into the, the staff report, if the council so would like, I would like to direct staff to go back and hash out more options or a potential alternative with Bertec that they can present in either the first or second meeting in June. I don't like the rates as they're presented, and I think we can do better, and so I would, so I would like, my, my direction, my motion would be to direct staff to go back into a short-term negotiation with Bertec and to bring back potentially a second option in the first or second meeting in, in June. And to also include in a, in a, in that staff report, whether it comes in first or second meeting in June, a survey of the 1383 rate hikes in that, in that organic waste. We need to see how other trash haulers compare to ours. I mean, it's real easy for people to say here, no, we shouldn't be raising it anything at all. We have to see how trash haulers in our region with like-sized cities are handling this 1318, sorry, this 1383 state mandate. So that would be, that would be, that would be my motion.
Councilmember Figueroa?
I'm just curious, is there a deadline that we have to meet? Are we up against the, a deadline?
Yes, the deadline, the deadline has passed, but CalRecycle is aware that we are negotiating and that we're actively pursuing the SB 1383 implementation. So obviously, the further we delay, the limelight becomes brighter in terms of our noncompliance.
So... There we go. It was blinking. So, so as long as we're actually actively working on it, it kind of, it, it, it's, we're within our ability to continue.
I would agree with that statement, however, it does put the city at risk if we do not move forward and implement, which is the basis for the proposed amendment, is the implementation of SB 1383. So if we're not able to come to an agreement on the, relative to the agreement with Bertec in terms of the implementation and the costs associated with it, then the city would be at risk of up to $10,000 per day fine. But that's really extreme cases. CalRecycle is fully aware of where we're at and is, is understanding that we're, we're working towards implementation.
But CalRecycle probably understands that we're trying to do the best that we can for the residents, and the rates need to be, I mean, as, as much as we possibly can, make sure that, unfortunately, this is something that we're going to have to do, but we need to have the best rate possible and as low as possible for the residents because they're hurting, we're all hurting. I would encourage, I mean, I would, I don't mind seconding it, but I, I just don't want to, I don't want the city to be at risk if we're not going to meet a deadline.
Councilmember Calvin, and then our city manager has a comment.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Mayor. I believe that there were a couple of date, couple of deadlines, correct? One may have been to establish the date, and then the implementation date. And implementation, I believe, is in 2026. Am I wrong with that? January 1st, 2023?
Yes.
Implementation?
Yes.
Meaning rates already have been instituted and we are abiding by those rates. So what is the, what was the deadline, then?
So the, the date to implement the SB 1383 requirements was January 1st, 2023.
What were the requirements? Refresh my memory, please.
So there, we, we do have a slide, slide that goes through all.
Let's allow the staff to present. Mr. City Manager, did you have a comment?
I'll just go ahead.
There is a motion second on the table at this time. Mr. City Manager, did you want to?
No, I was gonna say, I mean, if the council wishes or to have us go back and see if there are the options we can do, I don't think that they're going to mind or raise an issue with that if we want to do that. But you can also do the presentation as well. But in answer to your question, Councilman Figueroa, I don't think there's gonna be an issue with that. I think they would comply with it. Yeah. It's up to your call, though.
Councilmember Alexander?
If this council chooses to go back, for you to go back and negotiate, could you do me a favor and help out my seniors and negotiate a seniors rate in there?
Can I? I think if there's anything that the council is desirous of to see in the contract when we come back, I think now is the time, if you want to add that. Doesn't mean they'll agree to it, but we can certainly go in and say, hey, you know, these are interests of the community, and if you want an agreement, then you need to consider these things.
And also consider helping clean up the blight in our city, illegal dumping, those types of efforts.
If I might, Madam Mayor, I mean, there may be several other things that the council may be interested in. It would be helpful to just have one list of items from council that says, here are the kinds of things that we'd like for you to bring to the table with them.
Okay. Councilmember Charette?
Yeah, I think we want to separate out some of the things that, that we're doing. We'd like to know, I think, a market rate for what cities are doing and what their percentage is that's related to 1383. Is that clear? Do I need to say anything more than that? I mean, that's, that's what's important. We've got a lot of numbers around here. We've got one big giant number of, of an increase, but I think that takes into consideration a lot of different things, and, and I'd like a percentage of, of what we're currently paying, which is around the $26 range, right? And what the, what the increase is percentage-wise that's related strictly to 1383. Nothing to do with seniors, nothing to do with smaller cans, nothing to do with anything, but, but if we were just gonna have a 1383 increase. Does that make sense? Okay, thank you.
We have a motion and a second at the table. City Clerk, please call for the votes.
Yeah, I just, since we're putting things on record, you know, there are, there are some resident, residential customers who, who don't need a 90-gallon barrel, maybe a 35-gallon barrel, and I know that the city of San Bernardino, before we outsourced that, had done that for residents who don't, who don't need a 90, 90-gallon barrel. So if Bertec could take also a look and staff can take a look at an option of a smaller barrel at a, at a discounted rate, I'd appreciate that.
Mr. City Manager, if you could just get all the feedback from all of the electeds and then, you know, yes, combine all of the feedback and work with Bertec. Thank you. Madam City Clerk?
Mayor, I just want to clarify for the public, since we did have a public hearing under Prop 218, if you were to vote affirmatively on this motion, that would continue the public hearing, so therefore you would continue it, and any majority, any protest that were lobbied tonight will move forward. And contrary to what I said, if you do have another public hearing, any majority protest submitted at your subsequent meeting would count. So I want the public to know that because it is their right to be able to be heard at your next meeting as well. When this item is taken up.
Thank you. Councilmember Charette?
I'm gonna put it in my terms. So what you're saying is that any protests that were given tonight are still good. They don't have to be redone, and there's now, because there's gonna be a period of time between now and, and when we hear this again, there's the opportunity for people that maybe not have gotten in under the deadline of tonight, that they can still protest if they want or give positive feedback, whatever.
Correct, and depending on when staff brings it back, I may recommend that they republish it as well, just as an abundance of caution so the public is aware.
Republish?
Republish the notice when there's a future hearing because we don't know when we're gonna come back to you because we'll be negotiating. I just want to make sure that the public is given the right to know that you're having, that you're continuing the public hearing. Thank you.
It would, it would require republishing of the notice?
I believe so because if we knew a date certain, if you said, we know we're gonna continue it to June specifically, we don't have to re, republish it. But my recommendation to be on the safe side would say if they bring it back, say, in July, because that's how long it takes.
Yes.
For the attorney, if we have, continue this to a date certain?
Correct.
Then we don't need to?
Then you would not need to do that. If you deny, continue it to a date certain.
Yeah, I don't want to redo a, a 218 notice.
Right, so I'm, my recommendation would be to do it to a date certain.
Second meeting in, second meeting in June.
That's what we were gonna propose, to give staff sufficient time to?
That would save us a lot.
I'll amend my motion to, to include the specific date of second meeting in June. Second council, second regularly scheduled council meeting in June.
Do I have a second?
It's just, it's just an amendment to my motion.
Okay, so, all right, can call the votes.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Yes.
Councilmember Ibarra?
Yes.
Councilmember Figueroa?
Yes.
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Councilmember Calvin?
Yes.
Councilmember Alexander?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. So we can proceed back to public comments? Back to public comments, or?
Yeah, so it would be up to you whether you want to do discussion items or go back to public comments, such as you.
I would move that we just, I mean, presentations and then recontinue the, the comments.
We have two presentation, and the council member did, suggested to have the presentation go first, is the proclamation presentation. Do we have consensus on the dais to go ahead with presentation, then we continue the public comments after that? Councilmembers, consensus? A hearing, no, then we're gonna move forward to presentation, then public comments. The first proclamation is for the National Public Works Week in the city of San Bernardino, May 21st to the 27th, 2023. Director Daniel Hernandez and Public Works staff will accept this proclamation. Please come up to the front. I will also ask that the second proclamation for the National Salvation Army Week in the city of San Bernardino, May 15th to 21st, 2023. Majors Isaías, Becca Braga, and I believe I have his wife. Major Delma to come up to accept the proclamation.
Mayor, may I request that I join you at the dais? Because I do sit on the advisory board of the Salvation Army. This isn't coming from me, but I want to be a part of the presentation if that's acceptable.
Hello? We're gonna start with the public works. Proclamation of Mayor and City Council recognizing National Public Works Week, May 21st to the 27th, 2023. Connecting the world through public works, whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities, and to the public health, high quality of life and well-being of the people of the city of San Bernardino. And whereas these infrastructures, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the city of San Bernardino to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in the respective communities. And whereas the year 2023 marks the 63rd Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association, Canadian Public Works Association, be it now. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and the city council of San Bernardino do hereby designate the week of May 21st to the 27th, 2023 as National Public Works Week. I urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life, presented this day, 17, May 17th, 2023. Thank you so much. Your work is, does not go unnoticed, and for all the effort to keep our community safe. Thank you so much. Big round of applause, folks.
So first, I would like to take the, the mayor and the city council for this proclamation. You know, I, I represent the public works as a, as a director, but it's really the work that is done by the staff that truly is what should be recognized. I'm fortunate to lead this team. I think it's an honor and privilege to serve the city of San Bernardino, but it's the team, we have a couple of employees here who are, who are representing the public works team, but it's the hard work and dedication that they, they provide. So I do want to recognize our team. Obviously, we have over 150 employees, so I can't recognize everybody by name, but I did write down some, like it was an Oscar speech, I want to make sure I didn't forget anybody. So our team is comprised of, of administration, engineering, and operations. Our administrative team is consisting of our senior management analysts, our executive assistant, and our integrated waste team. Ms. Leslie was gonna present our item, which she'll be back on the second meeting in June. Our engineering division, which is led by our, our, our acting city engineer, Ms. Susan Pan, oversees our capital delivery, our traffic engineering, and land development services. Our operations team is led by Deputy Director of Operations Ernesto Salinas, who was recently promoted to that, that position, which was a well-deserved promotion. This is broken up into two divisions. It's Fleet and Facilities. This section handles our custodial, facility maintenance, and our equipment maintenance of all our city equipment and vehicles. And lastly, but definitely not least, there are Operations and Maintenance Section, which includes park maintenance, street maintenance, our forestry, and our traffic signals and lighting. There's a, there's a saying that we like to use in the public works community, and I think it's true, and I say it to my staff all the time, "The public works because of public works." So that, I really truly believe that. Our staff is out there, early mornings, on the weekends, doing the doing the work to keep our community safe and healthy. So I really thank my staff for the hard work and dedication they give every day. We're not perfect, but we're always striving to be the best organization that we can be.
Thank you. Big round of applause again. Thank you. And I have Councilmember Fred Charette, Mayor Protam, Fred Charette. Proclamation of the Mayor and City Council recognizing National Salvation Army Week, May fifteenth to twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three. Whereas the Salvation Army has been serving the people of San Bernardino for more than one hundred and thirty-seven years, physically, emotionally, and spiritually. And whereas the Salvation Army is present whenever the need is greatest, especially during the times of crisis, where vulnerable citizens are more at risk of becoming homeless, hungry, addicted, or spiritually tired. And whereas the Salvation Army invites the people of San Bernardino to love beyond and help the organization continue to provide life-changing aid by serving those who need it most. And whereas it is fitting and proper on Salvation Army Week to recognize the tremendous impact of philanthropy, volunteerism, and community service in the city of San Bernardino. And whereas the National Salvation Army Week is an opportunity to encourage citizens to serve others with their resources and time during the difficult period that many of us are experiencing. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Mayor and City Council of San Bernardino hereby recognize the week of May fifteenth to the twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three, as National Salvation Army Week in the city of San Bernardino, and encourage all citizens to join together to give back to the community in any way that is personally meaningful, presented this seventeenth day of May twenty-twenty-three. Mayor Protam, would you like a few words to say?
Yeah, I'll just say one word. I want to make sure it's clear that this is, I think, the mayor's doing. It is the National Salvation Army Week, and I think it's great. I do have the honor, though. And Carl, can you get someone to take your pictures for you? Because you're on the advisory board as well, and I think I'd like to invite you to join us. But someone needs to pick up that camera, I guess. Unless you can take a selfie.
We have a...
Okay. But I wanted to recognize Carl as well because he's worked diligently and been on this board, the advisory board, a lot longer than I. And I'm honored to be a part of it. And I offer very little help, but what I do, I appreciate what you all do very much. So Carl, thank you. Majors, thank you very much, and congratulations. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Big round of applause. Okay. Now we're going to move back to our public comments. Thank you so much for your patience. Madam City Clerk?
Julieta Fuentes, Roque Pelayo, Jenny Linares, Olga Flores, Jessica Alcoser, Russell Howagui, Manan Perez, Y Negrete, Jesús Ontiveros.
Please proceed to the podium and state your name. I believe we need a Spanish interpreter, do we?
Hola, buenas noches. Mi nombre es Julieta Fuentes. Estoy aquí apoyando dos agendas. La primera es para los vendedores ambulantes.
Hi, my name is Julieta Fuentes, and I'm here in support of two items. The first one is for the public vendors, our public vendors.
Ganamos la ley estatal SB nueve setenta y dos que actualiza el código de alimentos de California.
We won the law, the law state SB nine seven-two that updates the code of food of California.
Queremos que hagan lo correcto en enforzarla esta ley con educación e infraestructura.
We want you to enforce this law with education and construction.
Para saber a dónde dirigirnos y saber cuáles son los requisitos para obtener los permisos y los carritos apropiados que se necesitan para la ciudad.
So we can know where to go and what are the requirements that we might need to get the permits, to get the little cars that are needed for the city.
La ley estatal SB nueve setenta y dos también nos permitirá guardar nuestros carritos en casa.
The state law SB nine seven-two also authorizes us to put our little cars away at home.
Pero como el condado de San Bernardino no ha probado las micro cocinas, es por eso que la ciudad necesita construir un centro de trabajadores.
But because the city of San Bernardino has not approved or has not facilitated the construction of a mini kitchen, a micro kitchen, they need to provide a place where we can, where the vendors can work.
También estoy aquí apoyando la comunidad afectada por el desarrollo del plan específico. No me opongo al desarrollo de este, pero en nombre de la comunidad pido que haya una reubicación justa para los residentes.
I'm also in support of the specific plan of development. I'm not opposed to it, but I would like to ask for a relocation of the residents.
Pero este acuerdo, estos beneficios, estoy pidiéndolos que sean por escrito para que no se queden en el olvido.
Thank you. Time is up. Thank you. Gracias. Next speaker, please state your name.
Soy Jenny Linares. Soy Jenny Linares, residente del condado de San Bernardino y vendedor ambulante por dieciocho años. Y hoy estoy aquí para pedirles que, por favor, paren de darnos multas y de tirarnos nuestros alimentos. Les pedimos que, por favor, los dejen ganarnos nuestro sustento diario que los permite sostener nuestras familias y pagar nuestras rentas.
I'm here in support of the public vendors, vendors out on the street. I would like to ask for you to stop fining us, giving us fines, and stop throwing our food away because this is the way we support our family. I've been a food vendor for eighteen years.
Nuestra comunidad inmigrante durante el tiempo de la pandemia se vio obligada a vender cualquier tipo de comida para poder sobrevivir. Y hoy en día, los permisos y las multas están siendo inalcanzables para nosotros. Por eso les pedimos que, por favor, inviertan en un centro para que los vendedores y los trabajadores jornaleros podamos tener un lugar seguro con muchas comodidades.
I'm at...
En tiempo de pandemia, nosotros tuvimos que implementar cualquier tipo de negocio de comida.
During the pandemic, we had to implement and try to sell anything that we could to support us, ourselves, and our family.
Los permisos y las multas están siendo demasiado caros para nosotros.
The fines and the requirements are way too expensive for us.
Por eso les pedimos que los apoyen con un sitio, un centro de trabajadores y vendedores ambulantes donde podamos tener comodidades.
This is why we ask that you develop a spot, a place where we, public vendors, day laborers, can work comfortable.
Sabemos que la ciudad de San Bernardino tiene los recursos, y nosotros también aportamos pagando nuestros impuestos.
We know that the city of San Bernardino has its resources, and we also help by paying our taxes.
Permítanos trabajar con respeto y dignidad. No estamos haciendo nada malo, queremos ganar nuestro sustento diario.
Let us work with respect and dignity. We're not doing anything wrong. We just want to make our daily living.
Thank you. Gracias. Next speaker, please state your name.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Jesús Ontiveros.
Good evening. My name is Jesús Ontiveros.
Estoy aquí para apoyar a mis amigos jornaleros.
I'm here in support of my friends and colleagues, day laborers.
Y mis amigos vendedores ambulantes.
And my street vendor colleagues.
Y le estoy pidiendo al concilio que, por favor, nos apoyen en este proyecto.
And I'm here to ask the council to please support us in this project.
Ya que nosotros proveemos diferentes servicios.
Because we both give different services to the community.
Como es construcción, jardinería, todo lo que es para mejoras del hogar.
We offer all kinds of services, like gardening, construction, all the things that we need to make this place better.
Y eso es para mantener a nuestras familias también.
And this is how we sustain our families as well.
Eso es todo, y Dios les bendiga.
That's all for me, and God bless you.
Thank you. Gracias. Next speaker, please state your name.
Buenas tardes a todos. Mi nombre es Olga, y soy organizadora en la Coalition Justice for Immigrants.
Good afternoon to everyone. My name is Olga, and I'm an organizer with the Inland Coalition for Immigrant Justice.
El año pasado trabajamos duro junto con otras organizaciones a lo largo del estado, yendo a Sacramento.
Last year, we worked very diligently with other organizations throughout the state by going to Sacramento.
Para que la ley SB nueve setenta y dos pudiera pasar.
So that we can pass SB nine seventy-two.
Ahora estoy aquí pidiendo que los empleados de la ciudad se tomen en serio esta ley y trabajen y se eduquen en cómo implementarla.
Now I'm here asking that the city employees take this law seriously and work to learn about it and how to implement it appropriately.
En varias ocasiones hemos ido a la oficina de registro de negocios, y no saben cómo orientar a los vendedores, ya que siempre dan diferentes respuestas.
We have gone time and time again to the Office of Business Registration, and we have seen that the staff does not know how to guide the vendors, asking for guidance.
Y quieren que los vendedores firmen otros documentos que no tienen que ver nada con sus multas.
They're also requiring for vendors to sign documents that have nothing to do with their citations.
Estoy aquí para pedirles una moratoria para todos nuestros vendedores hasta que la ley SB nueve setenta y dos esté bien implementada.
I'm here asking for a moratorium on citations to all street vendors until the SB nine seventy-two law can be implemented appropriately.
Para formalizar a todos los vendedores de la ciudad.
This will allow to formalize all the street vendors in the community.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you. Gracias. Next speaker, please state your name.
Well, my name is Jessica Alcoser, an economic justice organizer with the Inland Coalition for Immigrant Justice. I am here once again speaking on behalf of street vendors and day laborers, and urging the council to support an emergency ordinance to stop all enforcement operations immediately until there is an established collaborative process created to provide solutions via the creation of the San Bernardino Worker Center. Day laborers have a right to seek work, protected by their First Amendment. Street vendors have the right to adequate technical assistance and resources to be able to formalize their business, if that is your goal. We are conscious that the city is moving towards increasing access to resources that aid small businesses via the SB investment playbook, and want to remind you that this very same request for a worker center is outlined in that same investment playbook. Despite having our proposal in the playbook, we continue to be left out of the planning table as community organizations. And by extension, you're leaving out the voice of the same worker communities it claims to be for. I'm urging you to take action to fulfill the promises of the playbook and include the workers' voice when creating these solutions. This starts with this emergency ordinance that will provide much-needed relief to workers seeking ways to formalize their businesses in a city that lacks clear permitting processes and appropriate technical assistance to make this a reality. I'm urging you to stand with the workers and the communities of the laborers and the street vendors and support an emergency ordinance to stop citations. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
Esmeralda, San Bernardino city resident, an actual city resident. This question, I'll begin with the question. Mr. Sanchez, were you the only one, the only council member at that closed session meeting where the ACLU and the city manager signed an agreement? Or were you the only one paying attention? Because I'm just baffled how this is to blame to you. So with that said, I have asked you before, all of you council members, to spend some of your energy, you know, the same amount of energy of going after John Valdivia, right? The same passion, to spend some of that energy rebamping the charter, right? I asked for checks and balances for the city manager. Why? For the same reason that we just saw that letter with ACLU and the city manager. So with that said, right now, Mayor, you have an assistant that is earning almost what one of the trainees for San Bernardino PD earns. You have an assistant earning six thousand nine hundred and fifty-nine. One entry training is five thousand seven hundred and thirteen. A regular officer after the training is seven thousand. That's pretty much what your assistant is costing us. In the job description, she doesn't have that anymore. So why was it that the city manager opted to fill that position for you, right? Before changing the description? So I ask that you, before you make any permanent, you know, ideas or who you're going to hire, that you change the job description. This is for all of you, right? Because, you know, we need more police officers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please state your name.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Russell Howagui. I'm a staff attorney with the San Bernardino Community Service Center. We're a nonprofit organization that provides low, free, and low-cost legal services in immigration law to residents of San Bernardino and the Inland Empire. I'm here today in support of the street vendors and the day laborers in light of the law that you've all heard about, nine seventy-two, which supports the rights of street vendors. We would urge, you know, that all enforcement actions by the San Bernardino Police Department and local enforcement to stop immediately allowing time for the community organizations here and the city council to work on a viable solution so that these street vendors and community members can continue to work and contribute to the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk?
Marian Perez, Junior Carillo, Hilbert Duarte, Danielle Chivandi, Morris Rocha, Christian Flores, Selena Perez, and Dolores Armstead.
Please state your name. Thank you.
In the essence of time, I'm going to forfeit my time before we can move on with the meeting.
Next speaker, please state your name.
Good evening. My name's Albert Duarte, and I'm a member of Local four sixteen, the ironworkers, Local four sixteen and Local four thirty-three. We represent over sixty-five hundred members, and a good two-thirds are in this area. And we're new residents also. We request that the city... We request that the city, the city council, would publicly deliberate at the next city council meeting a timeline for the redevelopment of the Carousel Mall and that you ensure that at least 25% is designated for affordable housing. I also request that you set the bar high, especially with the new council, for any future development and you establish community benefits for all, all community benefits or community benefits for all development that establishes local hire and affordable housing. I visit jobs four times out of the week and a lot of them are non-union jobs. And the difference between what we make as a union worker and what a non-union worker makes is drastic. And their wages haven't changed since the early 80s. We really make about $80,000 a year and...
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Next speaker, please state your name.
Morris Rocha with Local 105. Good evening, mayor, city council members. Thank you for this opportunity to speak on behalf of sheet metal workers Local 105 who has over 6,000 members. My name is Morris Rocha and I'm here to represent all members of my organization. I urge the city council and mayor to have an inclusive and transparent process that includes both community and labor input, which would put the path forward for the Carousel Mall. This is a project that has the ability to help with the housing crisis, but most importantly, must have the community benefit of good-paying jobs, sustainability, and equity for all local residents. This is why I ask you, city council members, to take a hard look in addressing the urgent housing crisis and economic needs in San Bernardino. Rewrite the narrative. Really rewrite the narrative and start prioritizing the needs of its constituents. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
Good evening, city council. My name is Daniel Jivangi and I'm here today to give a few quick comments on a discussion item that you're going to be having later tonight, which is the homeless crisis. Some of my notes on this is, one of the things I'd like for you all to think about is the 2,300 residents and the people that will need to be relocated as a part of the airport gateway specific plan. The community faces many challenges with homelessness and overall housing affordability. This is a development that will add to the existing problems. As half of the 2,300 residents are renters and most of those renters being low income to very low income and they're going to end up in a compromised situation as they'll have hardships finding comparably priced rental properties in the area. Although a majority of the 2,300 residents live in the city of Highland, this is an issue that affects our city as well just as much as Highland and this is a pretty big regional issue. As development proposals and zoning ordinances come up, I hope that it does not come at the expense of residents. And my hope for you all is to hear your thoughts and potential remedies to community concerns with the IVDA Airport Gateway Specific Plan soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Celine Perez. I'm the chief of staff for the Inland Empire Labor Council as well as a member of the Something Better for San Bernardino Coalition. Unfortunately, a lot of my brothers and sisters from labor had to go home because I had to get up at 4 o'clock in the morning, but I do appreciate and thank the folks that are still here. And one of the main things is that it's time for the city of San Bernardino to do things differently regarding its economic development to bring success, prosperity, transparency, and to collaborate with the community to make this happen. It is vital that when the city develops a new RFP for the Carousel Mall development that there be 25% affordable housing and community benefits baked into it. That it be full, transparent, and clarity of expectations in the RFP right at the beginning for any developer in the community to be clear on. We think that it's a moment right now, an opportunity that shouldn't be wasted, that just like you, we want to address the homelessness situation and also poverty in our city. And that the way to do that is by having affordable housing, but also good jobs and thriving businesses in our community. Let us rebuild our city. We are ready and have been ready to do this. The city has so much potential for its residents, workers, businesses, and communities to succeed, to do things differently, set new standards for our city that are long overdue, and to do it collaboratively with this project. And as our city's leadership, I ask that you ensure that it become a reality. And I want to thank council member Kelvin, the mayor, and the city manager, and council member Reynoso that have been willing to talk to us and hear us about this and see how we can partner up in making this move forward. And we hope that we can get the rest of you on board. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
Good evening. The first item I'd like to address is item number five regarding the assessment levies. It's the workshop that you're going to have. I am asking that this be open to the public. This regards evaluating properties, plan future developments, infrastructure planning, public-private partnerships. I think that the community should have input of what's going on. This is too big an issue. It's too many. It's too broad issue for this city and we should have input. The community should have input in what's going... Should have input and we should be, have access to the workshop so we know what the contractor is proposing. That's number one. Thank you. And then also regarding the Carousel Mall, development of the property, I'm hoping we can move forward and it won't take another five to 10 years for us to proceed. This city is supposed to be the gem of the county and we are way behind. So I'm asking the council, can we please move forward quickly and make sure it's transparent and that we all also have input because it is our city too. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
Hi everyone, my name is Christian Flores. I'm a community organizer with Inland Congregations United for Change and Something Better for San Bernardino Coalition, echoing a lot of the thoughts, hopes, and concerns for the, for the new, the creation of the new RFP for the Carousel Mall redevelopment, ensuring that we have as much community input in regards to the decision-making process as possible and identify and prioritize the included writing for a community benefits agreement from the get-go so that us as a city can serve to be leaders once again in regards to how development can be done differently to ensure that we have well-paying jobs, opportunities for our laborers, and helping their housing security as well by extension. Because we're currently undergoing such a huge housing crisis and I know we've been trying, we've been doing everything we can to try and address it. I know a lot of folks, nobody has the patience because it's just that dire. So again, just want to reiterate that moving forward with 25% affordable housing for the community benefits agreement for the downtown redevelopment allows us to set us apart as being somebody that really... Our city's setting us apart for being a municipality that really prioritizes doing our part for the housing crisis for the state of California. Just like we were one of the second or third cities throughout the nation that passed the first moratorium when COVID first happened.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk?
Marian Perez, Jesús Caxiola, Jesús Cruz, Luis Valentan, Henry Salazar, and Tony De Trinidad.
Please state your name.
Buenas tardes, soy Jesús Caxiola y vengo en representación de jornaleros aquí en San Bernardino.
Good evening, my name is Jesús. And I'm a day laborer in San Bernardino.
Vengo esta tarde noche a acompañar a mis compañeros y en la causa de que nosotros estamos haciendo un trabajo honesto.
I'm here along with my colleagues this evening to reiterate that we are doing an honest job.
Y como en mi persona pues le doy gracias a Dios que tengo la oportunidad de ser un jornalero porque no puedo tener un trabajo digno a razón de que mi salud no está al cien.
I give thanks to God that I am able to have this dignified job because due to my health, I am not able to do another job.
La razón de que yo sigo ahí porque es la única manera de poder sostener a mi familia.
The reason I am still working there is because this is the only way I can sustain my family.
Y no es un trabajo fácil estar ahí desde las 4 de la mañana hasta las 5, 6, 7 de la tarde parado en el sol. No tenemos un baño digno para poder hacer nuestras necesidades.
This is not an easy job, being up since 4:00 in the morning, standing in the sun, not having access to a proper restroom where we can take care of our needs.
Y no tener de perdida una sombra o unos asientos donde podamos estar ahí esperando trabajo.
And on top of it all, we don't have any shade or any seating for us to be able to patiently wait for our jobs.
Y lo más justo que yo puedo pedirles es que paren, paren las autoridades en darnos infracciones, en darnos... Pues es molesto estar parados ahí y pensando que van a llegar ellos y nos van a dar tickets.
I think it's fair to ask the city that you stop citing us because it's really time-consuming to be worrying about when the next ticket is going to come and when they're going to enforce.
Y sería una razón tan digna de que ustedes fueran las personas que nos ayuden en poder construir un lugar donde podamos estar dignamente ganando nuestro trabajo.
It would be a very dignified decision by you all to support building this worker center where we can stand, where we can be while waiting for our work.
Yo le doy gracias a todos los que estamos aquí, residentes de la ciudad de San Bernardino, que venimos cada vez que se nos da la oportunidad de poder hablar y traerles nuestros mensajes y nuestras vidas en ustedes. Gracias.
I give thanks to my colleagues who are here with me every time we get a chance to speak on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Gracias. Next speaker, please state your name.
My name is Luis Valentan and she'll be here just to help me if I get, if I struggle a little bit with the English. But I want to, I want to mention a paragraph in the, one of the amendments in the constitution that says that all men are created equal, that they are endowed, endowed by their creator with certain unillable rights that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And yet, day laborers and street vendors are continuing and experiencing exclusion, criminalization, and racism, and this is not acceptable. I work at a nonprofit called the National Day Labor Organizing Network, NDElon, and then we have more than 20 years of experience helping create and opening these spaces. And something that we can say is that these places are the right thing to do, but also are a great effort and investment in our communities, not only for the workers when they're searching for jobs, but it's also a great effort for our entire community, right? And also, these are spaces to create leaders and I can say that I'm one of them. As a day laborer, I was able to receive all these trainings and classes that, you know, made me who I am right now. And I'm an advocate for day laborers and street vendors and I'm encouraging you and inviting you to do the right thing and not to see these situations as a problem. And we have to find a way to see it as a good, good problem and effort and investment into the entire community. These places are not only for day laborers, but they're also, right now, we can say that they're becoming centros de acopio. How do you say that?
Wellness centers?
And we have the first responder teams, day laborers, helping in different areas, not just in California after natural disasters, but in the entire country. And the first ones that they send is day laborers without even providing safe equipment, education, or even to get the right pay for their work. And yet, they're still experiencing exclusion, criminalization, and racism from these structures of power that are not here to provide for the workers or the community as day laborers and street vendors because they are part of this community. They're contributors of the economy of this place. So, you know, I encourage you to please do the right thing and then we're here to help. We're going to be standing with day laborers and street vendors to the end. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
Good evening, council members and mayor. My name is Tony De Trinidad with the Painters and Allied Trades District Council 36 and we represent painters, drywall finishers, glass installers, and floor layers in the finishing construction industry. And I'm here to speak a little bit about Carousel Mall redevelopment. So we think it's time to put the city of San Bernardino on the map for a transparent, viable place to work and live. Jobs paying $20 per hour with little benefits is not going to solve the problem, especially with rent, housing prices, and interest rates increasing. That's why we are requesting at least a community benefits agreement where workers can make a decent wage with integrity, learn a career than just another job, work in the city, and possibly afford to live here if you implement an affordable rate ordinance for future development. And the best way to start off with that is by being transparent so the community can put their trust in you. The first step is in the right direction is to include the community and labor's input in drafting the new RFP for the Carousel Mall redevelopment. And that being said, I'm going to cut a little short. Thank you for your time and all the hard work that you do and we look forward to work with you in the future.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk?
I believe these individuals spoke earlier with the coma, Alani Chapman, Jennifer Sicara, Emily Valdez, Darcel Canada, and Kayla. Okay. We'll move on to the Zoom public comment. Lesi Philpott, please unmute your mic. You have a minute and a half to address the council.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Okay. I want to talk about item number 20. On May 3rd, you guys were talking about the police getting approved for robots and drones. Basically, I wanted to say we should have never approved them. We shouldn't make them work on the powers that they have now. Like when it comes down to hiring, they don't need to hire any officers that has been fired from other precincts when they're being investigated. They don't need paid leave. Qualified immunity needs to be, need to be ended. And then the crazy thing, they said that they need drones and robots to fight crime, but they're the ones that really doing the crime. Just an officer, no, it was a director from San Jose. She just got arrested for pushing drugs. And then the next one was... Oh, code enforcement. Our code enforcement sucks. Trash been piling up for days, for months already, and they're still haven't picked up the trash. The councilman said that they hired more code enforcement, but the trash is still building up. So I don't see more code enforcement working. Then the other thing, the engineer department, the engineer department needs to take everything back to 2004 and take off the dividers, the cones in front of the library. Those need all these...
Thank you.
They created a traffic jam.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker?
Joaquín Castillejos. If you can unmute your mic, you have a minute and a half to address the council.
Oh, good. Good evening, city council and mayor. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Joaquín. I'm an organizer with the Central for Community Action and Environmental Justice and I'm here in support of street vendors and day laborers in the city of San Bernardino. I'm here supporting the emergency ordinance to proclaim a more... And criminalization of all street vendors and day laborers. It's important to realize that street vendors are an important part of this community. They're an important part of the economic growth of San Bernardino and they're essential for those who participate in it. I think we've seen in this past few years that street vendors have been constantly attacked and criminalized by the city. They have not given, been given a chance to grow their, the permit... been given a chance to, to grow. Their, the permanent process is inaccessible, and essentially, the city is completely cutting them off from any type of way of growth and progress. You know, these, these vendors, these day laborers are not from other places. They are members of the community, contributing members of the community, and, and residents of the city of San Bernardino. They, street vendors have been shown time and time again to be beneficial for the economy, promoting public safety wherever they're at, and, and providing a source of healthy, healthy, fresh food where places where there's not supermarkets inaccessible for the elderly.
Thank you. Thank you, Joaquín.
Okay. I have two comments to read in for the ADA accommodations. Several comment emails were sent in today, and that packet was provided to you. Okay. So, this comment is from Hardy Brown. It's titled, "The San Bernardino City Council Should Remove Fred Sharet from All Committees Including Mayor Protem." Thank you, Mayor, Council, for taking the time to hear me. First, let me congratulate Mayor Tran for making history as the first Asian to celebrate Asian-American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month in San Bernardino City. You should be proud of this accomplishment because we, the citizens of San Bernardino, said you have the qualification, experience, and other attributes to lead us. Having said that, and even though I cannot attend every meeting because of my disability, I do watch and listen to every meeting. When I heard Ms. Rosio Aguayo make her public comment time during 5323 meeting, she said that Councilmember Fred Sharet would not support Mayor Helen Tran to be vice chair of the Inland Valley Development Agency because he feels she does not have enough experience, and she was too busy doing her job as mayor. It made my blood boil. I haven't heard those words before when white men did not want to promote me or give me a raise because I was black. I also investigated discrimination against women complaints at my former employer when white men did not want to promote women into higher management positions. None of them claimed to dislike blacks or women. They just did not like them to be in a position of authority or being over them. Now, who does Councilmember Sharet think he is? In my opinion, you are wrong and drunk with seniority from being the longest-serving council member. According to the city charter, it states the mayor is to represent the city in intergovernmental relations and establish and maintain partnerships and regional leadership roles to advance the city's interests. This is, okay. Now, we'll move on to the next ADA accommodation. Like I said, these were provided to you in the packet, and they're also available online for public review. The next one is from Tina Lopez. My name is Tina Lopez. Some of you may know me. I'm a longtime resident of the city. I love my city. With that being said, I couldn't attend your three-day meeting, nor can I attend tonight due to a recent surgery and infection from that surgery. My concern is nothing new, but it is getting very dangerous and unsafe in my neighborhood. I stay active and report all. I have reached out in the past and do so again. Now to you, Mayor, and to you, Damon Alexander, as a councilperson of my ward. I'm also here to inform all of you that sit on the dais. Remember each one of you when seeking reelection or seeking a new seat. Walking and campaigning for our votes to get to where you sit now, where you now sit. The promises that you all made, one being that you would return phone calls. While my many calls go unanswered, my neighbors' calls go unanswered. Mayor, I spoke to your assistant in hopes of getting an appointment to see and discuss my concerns. She said you were booked until June. Mr. Alexander, you have never reached out to me ever. Mayor, you are aware of my concern because according to your assistant, you and your team came to the disgusting encampment in front of both sides of the Pizza House on Sierra Way. It was said you and your team came out to survey the situation, but all of you stayed in the front, avoiding the real hazardous, bad area in the alley, which is, is clear view, but you should have come face-to-face what we are subjected to. We have had 50 and more in this filthy, dirty, germ-filled, germ-filled encampment growing each day. That concludes public comment.
Thank you. At this time, we move on to the city manager's report. City manager, please proceed with the city manager's report. Jeff Kraus, thank you.
Good mor, good evening, honorable mayor and council. I will be brief, but we do have a number of updates for you. First of which, the draft housing element is now available. It is online on the city's website at HTTPS futures SB, futuresb2050.com. The housing element provides guidance for the development, improvement, rehabilitation, and provision of housing for San Bernardino's residents. It incorporates the city's RENA allocation of housing, including affordable housing. The deadline to comment, to provide comment is on June 12th, and then it is tentatively scheduled to go to the planning commission in July. Next, some good news. The city has won an American Planning Association Award. The city received a transportation, a planning award from the American Planning Association for the city's active transportation plan. Congratulations to the Community and Economic Development Department for this recognition. Our economic development staff is heading to Las Vegas to attend next week's National ICSC Conference. Used to be called the International Convention of Shopping Centers, but now it's the Innovating Commerce Serving Communities Conference. That's a lot harder to say, but it's an opportunity for staff to connect with national retailers, developers, commercial real estate representatives, site selectors, and economic developers. They've prioritized meeting with development groups, retail companies, and food industry brands to facilitate growth and attract more investment into San Bernardino. This is a great one. Congratulations to Officer Dave Rosas. Last week, he hit 40 years of service on the San Bernardino Police Department. And it's important to note that it's 40 years and counting. He has no, no intention of retiring at this point in time. At his retirement recognition, that's, in case you're confused, that's him on the left, and that was him when he started 40 years ago on the right. On, on social media, I, I noticed that somebody asked if, back when he started, he was referred to as Ponch, but, but, but I'll let that one go. When he started 40 years ago, the police car was a Plymouth Velare. They didn't have cell phones, obviously, so call boxes were positioned throughout the city where officers could use a key to open the box and make a phone call. And it would take about 10 minutes to warm up the radio before they would go out on a shift. Congratulations to Officer Rosas. Starting tomorrow, our own Cal State University San Bernardino Yotes will be hosting a Division II NCAA Baseball Championship Regional Tournament here in San Bernardino. This is the first time in the 31 years in which Cal State San Bernardino has been in Division II that they have made the NCAA Baseball Tournament. And likewise, it's the first year in which they will be hosting. They had a great year of 39 and 17 and are the seeded number two in the entire Western Region. So, the games will be, there'll be games on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday of this week at Fiscalini Field. And thanks to Parks and Recreation for assisting in getting that successful bid. Speaking of parks, starting on June 1st, the Sizzling Summer Concert Series returns to the historic Roosevelt Bowl for eight Thursday nights in the summer. The kickoff concert on June 1st, gates open at 5:30, 5 o'clock, with the concert starting at 7:00, will be Grupo Equipo Activo. And there's a great alignment, a great listing of eight bands over the, June and July coming to the Roosevelt Bowl. And finally, on Memorial Day, May 29th at 9:00 a.m. on the steps of City Hall, the city will be holding a Memorial Day ceremony to honor those that have given their life in service to our country. In addition, if you haven't noticed already, there are banners recognizing some of our service members from San Bernardino throughout downtown, and we hope you can join us on Memorial Day at 9:00 a.m. for that ceremony. With that, I'll turn it over to the city manager. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager?
First of all, I would be remiss if I didn't inform the council that the Cal State is inviting each of the council members to attend these events. And so, I have some things here for you to give out to you at the end of the meeting so that you can come and attend. Madam Mayor and members of the council, there are a couple of comments I'd like to make, if, if that's okay with you. And I want to do this in light of some of the comments that have been made, because I think it's important on some of these issues that I respond as city manager. There were a number of speakers here tonight that, who were speaking as labor representatives and urging for the council to work in partnership with them, to look at issues that are near and dear to the community, you know, issues such as affordable housing, transparency, hiring locally, and providing well-paying jobs to our residents. So, that you know, I have had several meetings with representatives from the labor groups that are here. And I've expressed in very clear terms that the city's commitment is to work with them. We want to develop partnerships with our community, our labor groups. Their interests, their desires are no different than the council. We want to have a successful development projects in this city. And so, the things that they have alluded to, I think we fully support. I think also, at the same time, I've said to them that while we want to pursue these, at the end of the day, these projects have to be financially viable. Because if they aren't viable, then it does no one any good. It doesn't do the city or them. And I think they understand that, and I think they're willing to work with us. But we have to make sure as we vet these projects that we've got sound developers. We know what our financial capabilities are to make these projects successful. At the end of the day, that's what's going to be paramount to the city. So, I wanted to share that with you so that the community knows that staff, the community, council is very supportive and are working with these groups. And I think they will attest to that. Also, the second item, there were individuals who were speaking on the continuing problem of homelessness in the community. And I wanted to follow up some comments that I made last council meeting and on the homeless emergency issue. This week, I think all of you are aware of the closure of Paris Hill Park and Meadow Brook Park. These closures are necessary to perform overdue repairs, maintenance, and health and safety issues. Many of these activities, such as spraying herbicides to fight the weeds caused by the winter rains, spraying pesticides to prevent a mosquito infestation, excuse me, removing some 18 diseased trees, and repairing the irrigation systems will make the park safer and more enjoyable for all of our residents. In addition, outreach efforts in conjunction with our partners this week to homeless individuals at the park resulted in almost 30 accepting services, with others specifically reconnecting or successfully reconnecting with family members. On tonight's agenda are a series of actions that staff is recommending to address our homeless emergency in San Bernardino. These actions and recommendations include awarding a contractor to deploy a full-time homeless outreach staff, reallocating funds to create temporary emergency shelter capacity while our navigation center is under construction, approving a contract for a mobile shower and laundry program for homeless individuals, authorization to negotiate a contract for a lead developer and operator of the navigation center, applying for some $20 million in state funds to provide additional funds for the navigation center, and approving a homeless state of emergency implementation plan that will enable the city to speed up approval and permits to address this issue. Staff has worked tirelessly to transition our action plan into an implementation plan in only 90 days since the state of emergency was declared. Tonight's actions by the council will be the first of many subsequent steps we are taking to address this, this crisis. The steps San Bernardino is taking along with nearly $30 million in spending to address the crisis speaks to our values as a city and as a community. San Bernardino is a compassionate city. All of our residents deserve help when in need. San Bernardino is here to provide a pathway to assist our homeless residents every step of the way, whether an individual situation is a result of the economy, substance abuse, mental health, or other challenges. The steps we are taking today are necessary, compassionate, and urgent. However, we also must consider the health, safety, and quality of life for all of our residents. In addition to providing critically needed services, the actions before you tonight will also put us in a position to deploy a multi-disciplinary team made up of housing, public works, police, and others to enforce our anti-camping ordinance as well as other health and safety regulations. Excuse me, rules must be followed. We owe that to our residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sharet?
Yeah, if I could just ask one quick question about the parks. I've been asked about other parks. People have picked up on the idea that, that Paris Hill and the other one, Nunez, or Meadow Brook, that they're being closed for a period. And I've been asked about other parks, specifically Wildwood Park in the north end, to see, and they're asking, I think that the public is thinking that, well, why are you doing that there and not doing it in other parks? So, we will be doing that in other parks, but these are, are these particularly serious in terms of pesticides and tree trimming and things like that? Can you kind of address that?
Well, and I have.
I mean, I, I know we're.
Who's much more familiar with, but to answer your question, yes.
And I know we're going to talk about all of this, and it's all, it's all dovetails together in a major program to deal with this.
I'm sorry, Mr. City Attorney?
I, I just want to make sure. I think we were doing a city manager update, right? And a report, so we could do.
We'll get to it when to get to the discussion items.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
So, why don't we wait, hold off for any comments to that? So, thank you, Mr. City Manager, and all the work that you and the staff are doing to really address the issues that we're facing.
Right. And I, I just think it's important, Madam Mayor, members of the council, that when our residents are here and they're speaking, a lot of times, they don't have all the information or part of the information. So, I don't want them, and, and people will listen, obviously, to the broadcast. And I just want to make sure, to the extent that we can, we help provide accurate information for folks. They may agree or disagree, and that's okay, but at least we can provide them the facts. So, so, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, and we very appreciate the responses to the public comments, so that way they are really getting the facts, information, so they're informed. Thank you. All right. Tonight, the mayor's city council updates will be heard after the conclusion of city business, so we will move to our appointments. I invite a motion to approve the following. Item number three, Sean Kelly to the Public Safety and Human Relations Commission, representing Ward Two. Is there a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Figueroa, seconded by Councilmember Sanchez. Can we call for the vote?
Councilmember Sanchez?
Yes.
Councilmember Ibarra?
Yes.
Councilmember Figueroa?
Yes.
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Councilmember Calvin?
Yes.
Councilmember Alexander?
Aye.
Mayor Tran?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously.
And, and since Ms. Sean Kelly can't be in attendance tonight, she did ask me to accept the appointment on her behalf by me. She's, she's glad to be reappointed to that commission.
Awesome. Thank you, councilmember. Moving on to consent calendar, items four to 12. Do I have any polls from the councilmembers here? Seeing none, there's a motion to move for approval. Is there a second for the consent?
This for the consent.
Consent calendar, items four to 12.
I'll second.
There's a second. Can we call for the votes?
Councilmember Sanchez?
Yes.
Councilmember Ibarra?
Yes.
Councilmember Figueroa?
Yes.
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Councilmember Calvin?
Yes.
Councilmember Alexander?
Aye.
Consent passes unanimously.
Thank you. Moving on to discussion items. Number 13, adopt a policy designating a meeting minute taker and procedures for the taking and storing of minutes pertaining to closed session meetings of the mayor's city council. And before you is, is the recommendation. Could we begin with staff's presentation?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. The item to consider designating a minute taker for closed session was requested by the councilmembers last month. Staff is bringing this item forward for your consideration, along with the policy and procedure for taking and storing minutes for closed sessions. The council last considered this item in May 2019 when they discussed bringing the city clerk back into closed session. At the time, staff provided a. At the time, staff provided a survey of neighboring cities. The survey demonstrated that it is not standard practice for the clerk to attend closed sessions. In 2019, the council opted to continue with the standard practice and not include the city clerk. This month, staff again surveyed the same cities and found four cities, Huntington Beach, Moreno Valley, Riverside, and Victorville, have the city clerk in closed session. And although including the city clerk in closed session is uncommon in California cities, the council can base their decision on how the policy and procedures would benefit this organization. Should the council choose to designate a minute taker and a designee, staff has included the policy and procedures for taking and storing the meeting minutes, along with the information the meeting minutes will consist of. That concludes my presentation, and I am available for any questions.
Move to approve.
Thank you. Do any members wish to discuss or have any comments? Seeing none, I do have a motion.
Second.
And second, by Councilmember Alexander?
I have a question.
Oh, Councilmember Ibarra?
Yes, I think other cities, and you might want to correct me if I'm wrong, but after they have the closed session, they make it public to be seen. They make it available for the public to see those closed sessions.
Mr. City Attorney?
I think Hemet might be doing that.
I'm sorry, are you talking about reportable action under the Brown Act?
No, closed sessions, actual closed sessions. They have the closed session, nobody's able to see what happens in there until after it's been made. I have seen some cities.
I'm not answering, I'm not understanding the question, I'm so sorry. Okay.
Is that after we have a closed session, those notes are transcribed, and then they become public? Is that what you're trying to say, Councilmember?
No, that's not what I'm saying.
Okay, never mind.
Are you just talking about reporting? So, so what happens is the Brown Act requires, no? You're not talking about reporting either?
No, it's about recording the actual closed session meeting and then making it public.
Okay, so you're reporting the action that took place in closed session and making it public? Is that what you're talking about?
The actual closed session meeting. Like I've seen, and I could be wrong, I think I have seen it in other cities, and they have them on their YouTube channels.
No, no, I understand. What I'm trying to understand is what is it that they're making public? The decisions or what they discussed?
The actual closed session.
The meeting itself, the meeting itself.
Councilmember Ibarra is asking if the details of closed session can be made public, and I might understand closed session is closed session. Is that accurate, Mr. City Attorney, and that?
Yes, closed session is closed session. If the city wishes to waive attorney-client privilege or to waive those privileges, I suppose they could. It'd be highly unusual. I think what you may be referring to is reportable action. I'm pretty sure that, so some cities will come at a closed session, they will read in detail. If you had six closed sessions, they'll describe each item, and they'll say, on this item, the city council discussed negotiations as related to this, and there was no reportable action. On number two, they did this, and they directed staff to negotiate with the other party. Some cities give that detail, it's not required by the Brown Act, and we do comply with the Brown Act. We do come out on occasion and report action as required by the law, but we don't do anything more than what the law requires.
Thank you. Councilmember Charette?
Well, I'm not going to support the item because I don't agree with it. I think closed session is closed session, and that's what it should be. And in your report, you said that it's not done, it's not commonly done in California at all. Did I understand that? That's what I wanted clarification on.
Yes.
So, and I don't want to put words in the city attorney's mouth, but I think that the city attorney has not necessarily welcomed this with open arms either. And I don't think most city attorneys do. I could be wrong, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, but my belief is that this is not something that you're just all overjoyed about, so I'm not going to be supporting it.
Thank you. Councilmember Calvin?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Madam City Attorney, can you please discuss with us then what is reportable actions?
So, the Brown Act requires, for example, reportable action might be any final action that's taken in closed session. If there was a settlement agreement that was final, where you already had a document that was signed. If you are in negotiations with your labor unions and you have reached an agreement, then we would come out and report that. But by and large, what you discuss in closed session is confidential and not reportable to the public.
Thank you. So I think that the reason why this has come up in closed session for us is that because there are often times when we cannot remember what was done in closed session or a vote that was taken. And so that is why this item has come before us.
Yes, and if I could just tell the council, different cities handle this in different ways. For example, when we first began representing the city of San Bernardino, we had reporting forms. So prior to a closed session, for every closed session item, we actually took notes of who was present in the closed session, and we wrote down, not verbatim, nothing like that, but we wrote down the final direction. So if direction was given to staff to go negotiate a settlement, if direction was given to staff to go open up a recruitment, direction was given to staff, whatever it was, and then that was provided to the city manager's office. And then at some point, the city manager had an assistant city manager that was doing that, and that fell out of practice based on some changes in personnel. So some cities do it different. You have a lot of different options, as Mr. Councilmember Charette said. I understand the need to keep track of what's being decided, and I believe that that has to be done. The part about, you know, taking these verbatim minutes or notes in closed session is that it's confidential, and sometimes that doesn't always remain confidential, even when those notes are taken by the city clerk's office.
Fine, so it doesn't have to be verbatim, but what you're stating is that at one time, prior to our coming on the dais, there was a process, or prior to the last city manager, there was a process that was taken where notes were taken, they were recorded, they were kept here, city manager's office, someone had access to those, right? To be able to refer back, if anyone here on the dais questioned, what was that vote? Did we vote that? Versus allowing everyone on the dais to be able to say, yes, we did, no, we didn't, yes, we did, no, we didn't.
Yes, there are one-page form, and it documented, memorialized the direction that was given to staff.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Just for clarification, on packet page 504, it does indicate that should the council designate someone to take meeting minutes, there would be action minutes.
Councilmember Sanchez, did you want to comment?
Yeah, I think there's a motion in a second. I'd like to call for the vote.
Please call for the vote.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Yes.
Councilmember Ibarra?
Yes.
Councilmember Figueroa?
No.
Councilmember Charette?
No.
Councilmember Calvin?
Yes.
Councilmember Alexander?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes 422, with Councilmember Figueroa and Mayor Protam voting in opposition.
Thank you. Moving on to the next discussion item, item 14, responding to the city's urgent homeless crisis, and before you is the recommendation.
Good evening, Mayor and Honorable. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the council. Give me a second here. So the presentation that I have before you, it highlights several projects that the city is bringing forward to provide positive change, to reduce homelessness through a system of services, and to streamline action to help address the city's complex homeless crisis. Staff has outlined an implementation plan for council's consideration to accompany the city's homelessness state of emergency, which was declared on February 1st of this year. The implementation plan identifies steps and measures the city can take to streamline the development of shelters and interim housing, and improve the city's overall response to the homeless crisis. Specifically, the implementation plan outlines a shelter bed expansion, a dedicated homeless outreach team onboarding, the creation of interim shelter, the expansion of mobile showers and laundry services, the development of the city's navigation center, hereby named SB Hope Campus, Hope referring to homeless outreach, prevention, and education, an amended municipal code, and this amended municipal code was actually approved by the city back in 2010, and it allows for emergency housing, and it's also in compliance with the California Building Code, and it takes into inclusion Appendix P, which allows for emergency housing when there is an emergency declaration, a streamlined application process for new emergency shelters, shelter operator protocols, which have not previously been in place, compliance measures to make sure that new shelter operators that come on board are complying with the Department of Public Health and California State Board in regards to homeless housing services, an emergency shelter zone overlay, which identifies six areas in the city that can allow additional shelters and interim housing, and a list of identified community partners who currently assist the city with homeless-related services. It's a lot to unpack, but I'm gonna do my best with this presentation. The city recognizes that it needs to expand shelter services, excuse me, it needs to expand shelter bed capacity, and staff has examined the 2023 point-in-time count data to better understand the current number of shelter beds that the city needs, particularly to resume its enforcement of its anti-camping ordinances, clearing out parks, parking lots, and other public spaces. And according to our 2023 point-in-time count, as you can see, there's actually been an 11% increase in homelessness. When we look at 2022, our homeless count was 1,350, and as of 2023, that number has increased to 1,502. But the number I want you to focus on is the increase in our unsheltered homeless. That number has increased from 992 in 2022 to 1,017 in 2023. And so as a result, if we look, or if we consider, the 60% plus one shelter bed threshold allowance that's provided to us by U.S. District Judge David Carter, the city needs to accommodate 611 shelter beds. There are actively 387 beds in the city, which means there's a gap of 224 beds. For all intended purposes, the city just needs to focus on the 224. And staff has identified a way where the city can move forward with the development of 224 shelter beds, even during the construction of our navigation center, which will be highlighted later in this presentation. So I put this screen on here, just for complete transparency purposes, I want you to see how the city came about collecting the 387 beds, and these are the shelter organizations that are providing the various beds for men, women, and children. We do understand as staff that there are way more shelters out there that are simply not on the city's radar, and these are for various reasons. Some are religious organizations that are not receiving any state or federal dollars from the coordinated, from the county's CLC, and others are just private organizations that may be receiving private funds. But either way, as the shelter operators and the shelter beds do become known to the city, and as staff is able to vet these organizations, those numbers will be added to the city's inventory list. This does not include the additional 100 shelter beds that is currently being developed in partnership with Lutheran Social Services as part of Home Key 3.0 joint effort. So currently Lutheran has 70 beds, they're gonna add an additional 100. I'm just letting you know, that number's not currently added. If council approves the implementation plan, a streamlined application process for new shelter operators will be posted on the city's housing webpage, along with a list of protocols for new shelter operators to make sure that they remain in compliance with the Department of Public Health. There's also a zoning overlay map, and again, it outlines six shelter, it outlines six zones where shelters and interim housing can be permitted, and there is a process in place that will allow for conditional use permits to be permitted in 90 days versus the standard six to nine months. I want to make it clear that the expansion of shelter beds will be evaluated on an as-needed basis, meaning the city will establish a set limit on how many shelter beds are actually needed, and the practice of quickly deploying shelters will only be in effect during the city's homeless state of emergency declaration. So along with taking steps to expand shelter beds, and I will talk about the interim shelter in just a second, the city has released a request for proposals, actually, we released it back in March, in search of a lead operator to oversee homeless outreach. This is something that's critical and that's missing. We need a lead operator to provide homeless outreach for comprehensive citywide services. The city used Planet Bids, which is a widely-known web-based vendor portal, to make sure that there is complete transparency regarding the procurement process. But nevertheless, the staff also sent notifications to the county's ICH, which means Interagency Council on Homelessness, and the Central Valley Homeless Provider Network, to ensure that local agencies were made aware of the city's solicitation. And out of five applicants, Hope the Mission stood out ahead of everyone else in their ability to develop a comprehensive plan to provide citywide street outreach, and Hope the Mission demonstrated that it had the appropriate level of operational, procedural, and staffing infrastructure to ensure effective services. Hope the Mission has a proven track record of helping unhoused individuals and families with supportive services and housing. They oversee a vast portfolio of homeless housing projects in multiple counties, and upon council's approval, the homeless outreach contract in the amount of $1.5 million with Hope the Mission will go into effect 30 days after fully executed. In terms of mobile showers, Community Action Partnership, Loma Linda University Church and Trinity Church, which is led by Pastor Jones, currently provide mobile showers to the city's unhoused in various locations. The city seeks to expand mobile showers even further and include a laundry service component. Upon council's approval, Community Action Partnership will operate a one-year mobile project, mobile shower project, which includes a 28-foot mobile shower unit that includes three shower stalls and an attached laundry facility. Council has previously awarded, or excuse me, has previously approved $150,000 in ARPA funds for this mobile shower expansion. This occurred back on December 7th, and those funds will be used to cover this mobile shower project today. Community Action Partnership will partner with four community-based organizations to provide services twice a week at six-hour intervals. Now moving forward into, moving forward to discussing interim shelter. Basically, what interim shelter is, it's a mechanism that's in place when a city or jurisdiction does not have a permanent building or a permanent setting to house homeless individuals. And in our city's particular situation, interim shelter is crucial. The city has been in discussions with local churches and motel owners to establish interim shelter for 224 unhoused individuals. The interim shelter portion is what's going to allow our city to move forward with enforcing its anti-camping ordinances, even while we're in the process of building our navigation center. Local motel operators have expressed their willingness to provide interim shelter, offering a significantly reduced rate as a means of helping the city. When I say significantly reduced, we're talking about rates of $65 to $70 a night, when these shelter operators are normally getting $150, $160 a night. I'm not saying that this is cheap, but this is a process that is viable. And then also, the city had met with Pastor Beckley of Ecclesiastes Church, who was gracious enough to host a meeting between the city and local churches, where the option to provide temporary shelter, interim shelter, was offered, and churches have expressed their interest to participate. The churches will be required to have a vacant building, and in turn, the church will receive compensation in the form of a flat rental rate. This will be based on the number of occupants that they actually shelter, plus they will receive costs for utilities. Again, the city is not dumping any unhoused individual into a motel or a church. The city maintains responsibility, and as a result, interim shelter requires a lead operator. This is an absolute must. The lead operator will be responsible for providing general oversight, case management, meals, security, and wraparound support services to occupants, whether they're located in a church or motel. Having a good, strong lead operator who can provide, who can provide oversight in multiple locations is essential, and as such, the city would like to partner with Hope the Mission, who has been successful in developing this same type of interim shelter model, and has experience working with churches and property owners, and who has come alongside with the city and talked to churches regarding this particular interim shelter model. Because the city has declared a homeless state of emergency, staff has reached out to the U.S. Treasury and confirmed that ARPA guidelines will allow the city to bypass the competitive bid process and enter into a direct contract with the lead operator to fast-track services, which means that staff can. which means that staff can have interim shelter in place within 45 days. To help with the cost of interim shelter, staff is asking council to approve the reallocation of $973,500 in ARPA funds that were originally designated to San Bernardino Valley College for student housing under the Home Key, under the Home Key Round Three Project, and the city's relocation assistance program to ASU, which is the American Sports University. And specifically, what happened is recently San Bernardino Valley College determined that it was just not financially capable of partnering with the city on a Home Key grant to develop student housing. It did not have the funding sources to help sustain operations. And as a result, it rescinded its offer to accept 900,000 in ARPA funds. Also, at the American Sports University, staff was able to verify and assist 51 residents, not squatters, residents, with relocation assistance in the amount of $1,500 per individual, per household. So out of the program's initial $150,000, only $76,500 was spent. And that's how we get the 973,500 that we're asking to reallocate to help with the cost of the interim shelter. As part of the homelessness system of services, city council approved 12 million in ARPA funds towards the development of a pet-friendly, low-barrier, non-congregate navigation center, which is estimated to house 224 beds. This number has increased. It was 200, and now we're talking with a developer who says we can actually get 224 beds. 112 doors, 224 beds. The campus will provide interim housing, wraparound support services to address mental health and substance abuse. And as it stands, the city has enough ARPA funds to move forward with the development of the interim housing portion of the campus. But staff is seeking council's approval to submit a Home Key 3.0 joint, 3.0 joint application with Hope the Mission to complete the campus, adding all the bells and whistles, which includes the administrative and support service offices. And specifically, we're talking about the intake room, medical exam room, industrial kitchen, classrooms, things that just really bring the campus whole and make it whole and complete. The city desires to partner with Hope the Mission as a Home Key joint applicant because Hope the Mission has the experience in developing 15 homeless housing projects. It has a proven track record of completing projects on time and within budget. And Hope the Mission has its own grant writer, where the organization received three Home Key awards in the last award season. Due to the urgency of the city's homeless crisis, the city is in need of a developer who can fast-track the completion of our navigation center and provide professional oversight to ensure the project's success. The initial completion time of the navigation center was slated for 12 to 18 months. And actually, we thought this was pretty good until we found out that if you have the right developer, this project can actually be completed in just seven months. And this is possible if the developer has an experienced team consisting of an in-house architect and project manager, and if they also have a good working relationship with suppliers of modular units, so that the project is not reliant on one building source, which sometimes can be an issue with supply shortages. Hope the Mission has these attributes. It suggested that the city use a mix of modular units to construct our navigation center campus so that one type of modular unit, for instance, could be used to build the administrative, supportive services, and independent living units. And then we can use a different mix of modular units to create tiny homes, or ADUs, which would be able to accommodate individuals, couples, or families, those who are stable, those who are working, who have some sort of income. Hope the Mission has the experience and the skillset, and staff is requesting council's permission to negotiate and bring back a contract with Hope the Mission to act as developer and lead operator of the navigation center. And I want to give you this breakdown of the timeframe that we're looking at to complete the interim housing component of the campus, which will provide living quarters, restrooms, the warming kitchen, and kennel space for animals. The city would be able to transition any individual who is receiving interim housing in the motel and churches if they have not already been connected to housing, and they can transition to the campus. Specifically, the procurement guidelines for ARPA, again, it permits this non-competitive procurement procurement if we go into a direct contract that will allow us to save time. From start to finish, we're looking at two months to design and set up, one month to obtain a permit, four months to construct, seven months with the right developer. I want you to be aware of the cost to operate. We're not concerned with development costs because actually, the city has multiple funding streams, and we're also gonna apply for Home Key funds. But in terms of operational costs, I do not want you to have stickers shot. So, to be clear, it's gonna cost about $3.5 million to operate our navigation center. And this estimate is right in line with shelter operations of a similar scope. I'm gonna give you a cost comparison because I know this may seem like a lot of money, but take into, take into mind that in October of 2022, last year, during the homeless workshop, I showed you half of the slide that showed that in 2020, according to the San Bernardino County Cost Study, on average, island empire cities are spending close to $32,000 per person per year just to manage homelessness. If we look at the cost to construct and operate our navigation center, on average, it's costing us about $15,625 per person. It is a sound investment. It is worth the investment. So I have said a lot, and I'm sure there's a lot of questions, but the takeaway from all of this is that staff is asking for council to approve the adoption of a homelessness state of emergency implementation plan, which is outlined in greater detail in the staff report, to approve a homeless outreach contract with Hope the Mission, to authorize the city to submit a joint Home Key application with Hope the Mission, to authorize the city to establish interim shelter and enter into a direct contract with Hope the Mission, and authorize the city to, did we put this twice? Approve the mobile shower agreement with Community Action Partnership and authorize the reallocation of ARPA funds to provide interim housing. You're gonna ignore number eight. This was not the most revised PowerPoint. And so we're not looking to designate any of the ARPA funds for interim housing at this time. We feel that we'll probably use most of that. But we are asking to reallocate the ARPA funds from San Bernardino Valley College and the city's relocation program in the amount of $973,500. And with that said, before you have any questions for me, I want you to know that we do have Hope the Mission in the room tonight. I'm sure you might have a series of questions for them, and so they are available if council desires. Otherwise, staff is available to answer any questions.
I have Councilmember Mayor Portem Charette first, and then followed by Councilmember Calvin, and followed by Councilwoman Ibarra.
Thank you, Mayor. Cassandra, I'm, I'm speechless. This is real good, good stuff. And I lost track of all the numbers, but it sounds like we're, in terms of beds, it sounds like we're gonna achieve that within maybe less than seven months. We've been talking 18, 24. We've been talking, maybe we're working on it. We're kinda, this, ladies and gentlemen, proves that the council has given direction to the staff, and we've taken this issue seriously. And you and your staff and city manager and all the staff have just done an excellent, excellent job, and I couldn't be happier. And if we need to move approval for something tonight, I'd like to be the one to move approval for this money, the 900,000 coming back from the college. Sorry, Valley, but thank you. And this, this is, this really, this goes to what I was asking about a little while ago. This might be done before you get Paris Hill Park and, and the, the other, the other one, Meadowbrook, done. So this is just excellent. I just want to give, commend you all, and I'm very supportive of it. And thank you so much because this is, in my view, and I think most of us would agree, that this is the biggest issue. And it is not solving the homeless problem. It's not solving the mental ill problems. It's not solving the drug abuse problems. But it's getting us to where we can clean up our parks, start cleaning up our streets, and work on getting these people the help that they need and making it more permanent. But this is what the public wanted to see and what we've wanted to see, and I couldn't thank you more.
Mr. City Manager?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment, and I'll have to check with Madam City Attorney if I can expound or expand a little bit on the presentation because they tie in together. You asked a question earlier about Paris Hill and Meadowbrook. Oh, we're gonna stop there. And I wanted to have staff, if I can, address where we're headed with the other parks. And I mentioned to you the last time, we have formed a, I call it interdisciplinary team of cross-section of the organization. Police, we've got Public Works, we've got Code Enforcement, everybody at the table, working together to deal with this issue. There are two tracks to it, obviously. The shelter issue and the other enforcement, the encampment issue.
Charles, if I, if I may, I, I, my experience tells me that when people can see an end, they'll accept it. I mean, seven months, no one's gonna be happy with seven months. They want it done tomorrow. But seven's a lot better than 18 or 24. And I think the public, if we can say, and then stick by it, and say, "We're gonna do this within the next five, six, seven months." And really, they see progress and they see things happening. You know, unfortunately, that might take some of the parks through the summer, through the summer period. But we can see light at the end of the tunnel that we're gonna get our parks back and our streets back and give these people the help that they need and be able to enforce our, our no camping laws. And I think, again, I think people can deal with it if they've, if they've got a, a number that they can count on. They might not like it, but at least they can go away and say, "Well, okay, I won't bug you anymore, but I'll be back in seven months."
Well, and, I mean, the council has made this a priority. You've made it clear to the entire staff that this is a priority. And so that's direction to us, to go get it done. And if I can take a few minutes, again, to have, if you don't mind, have Park and Rec and Public Works make a couple comments on the encroachment side of encampments.
Thank you.
So, yes, as Charles mentioned, and, you know, as was presented, this is a multi-department effort. So obviously, Public Works plays a huge role in this. We thank the council for the increased resources as it relates to our staffing. So we're able to attack this full force and put the resources necessary for us to clean it up. But this isn't something that Public Works does alone. We are working very closely with the outreach team, with Parks and Rec. And now that we have this direction, you know, we're gonna, when we meet as a collective group and targeting our next parks, we're gonna work really closely. And our Parks and Recs director could obviously expand on the, the programming that we obviously are trying to, to ensure that we're meeting the, the needs of the public as it relates to the parks programs. So with that, I'll pass it over to, to Liddy.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I want to start off with the, the main question that we've gotten quite a bit over Paris Hill specifically is, you know, when is my park next and why Paris Hill? And I think it's really important to recognize the efforts that have been put in each year that I've been here now. So this is my second summer. And one of the big things that was coming last summer was the concert series, and we spent over six weeks cleaning up Paris Hill Park. Definitely, the situation of encampments and criminal activity has increased at that park. But that really wasn't our priority. Our priority was our programming. And so when you look in just a short few, eight weeks, what's going to be happening in one location, you're talking about thousands of people coming in and using our park amenities. And that is why we prioritize Paris Hill. So I want to talk about the programming and the aspects of what's being done for each of those programs. First and foremost is our concert series, an eight-week concert series. It's a weekly event. When we got to Roosevelt Bowl last year, there was over six feet of dirt and debris and trash in the stands and surrounding areas. This year, we have added our heater to the pool at Jerry Lewis, which means that our aquatic facility will be open year-round, kicking off this weekend. That means swimmers, over 400 swimmers a day, will be coming to Paris Hill, not just during the summer, but will continue throughout the year. In addition, we have our senior center, parking lots and surrounding area. We have the horseshoe pits, which have not been able to be used, that we're transforming into half-bocce ball courts. So there's a lot of upgrades and amenities that are being done to the park. But more importantly, Paris Hill Park, from what we heard from our community, was a place of gathering. And there were no longer any safe places because of needles, trash, and debris that were surrounding the park. When Ernesto and I did our first initial walkthrough of Paris Hill Park, our list was extremely long of things that needed to be fixed. We weren't looking at just the basics of just picking up trash and painting some things. We were looking at a complete overhaul of a park. That meant everything from overseeding our grass to looking at light poles that, it wasn't just, you know, electrical that had been torn out. These light poles were now slanted and unsafe. And then we started to see the damage of the trees as well. So when we're looking at a park cleanup, we're looking at maintenance first to make our parks safe, clean, and green for all of the programming that's gonna be happening this summer. Our goal as a task force is to be able to assess all of the maintenance needs first in regards to all of our programming. That will include youth, senior, and families, and how they can use our amenities. In a lot of the surveys that we did for the master plan, the two things that we heard the most are shade and restrooms. So we're looking at safety, we're looking at shade, and we're looking at restrooms. If you go look at the restrooms today at Paris Hill Park, you will see a brand-new painted restroom. It looks inviting, which is a hard thing to say for a restroom, but it actually has something that is functioning, and the community is responding. So we're excited about bringing that to each of the parks. It will take a while for us to make an assessment, but we will have a priority task list of each of the parks that we will hit. And every single one of them will get the love that it deserves. If you look at Meadowbrook Park, there's a beautiful, grass, open, green meadow park. It's beautiful. And that's something that hasn't happened there in a long time. And so we're looking at playgrounds. We're looking at walking paths. We're looking at lighting. And we're looking at the inviting structure of what we do for our community to come to our parks. And we're really excited to bring that to you.
Thank you. Councilmember Calvin? Are you good? Councilmember Ibarra?
Yes, I actually want to give a big thank you to all the staff, especially City Manager, for putting all the department heads together to create the team that you have done. We want to reassure the community that we are doing the best that we can to treat our unhoused population with dignity and respect and giving them the options and the assistance that they need, at the same time, providing a safe place for all of our residents. Our City Manager and Cassandra got a lot of emails from me that are very frustrating because I hear what the complaints are of our residents, you know, families. They can't go and enjoy the parks anymore. But hopefully now, there's, they can see the, the light because I saw the change on Monday. And I know people were asking me, "Where are they being sent?" And it's like, well, we have a team. We're working with the nonprofits. Just so the public knows, these are just the shelters that the city is aware of. I know many more nonprofits in our city that have beds that do not report how many beds they have because they're getting private funding. There, there are, I have shown our City Manager and other staff videos of actual vehicles dropping off people in our city in the middle of the night. I have seen people with suitcases along baseline, just walking on baseline in E Street, who's dropping them off. So it is, it is not just the city of San Bernardino's issue to address. As a board, a voting member in the I C H, I have been very vocal in telling the nonprofits to collaborate and notify the cities that, that they have their, their homes in, that they have beds available as well because they come to I C H, to the county, for money to fund their programs.[1707.93] well, because they come to ICH, to the county, for money to fund their programs. How can they be funded to help a problem that we have in our city, for example, and they're not really helping our residents? It's not just happening in San Bernardino, it's also happening, as I saw recently, in Victorville, a lady that had just recently became homeless, and she couldn't find shelter in Victorville for her and her children. These are the people that we wanna help. And I want to expand on the work that our staff is doing. My vision was to help those who are willing and able-bodied and want to get off the streets, first and foremost. There is a population out there that does not wanna be out in the street, that for whatever situation, whether it was their health, whether it was work-related, they got left out on the streets, or their rents went up, and they can't afford them anymore. The other part that's missing here, and hopefully we can address it soon, is part of the navigation center. I'd like to see another agency come in and provide jobs to those who don't have jobs currently, to help them find out a permanent housing after the navigation center. And I think that's where we might be heading, but that was the vision that I had, help those who are willing and able-bodied to get off the streets, and eventually, if they need a job, help them get the jobs that they need as well.
Councilmember Ibarra, yeah, I'm sorry, I failed to mention that. So we're partnering with Workforce Development to bring them on board as a partner on-site to assist with job training and placement, San Bernardino County Workforce Development.
And I think last year, we had the grand opening for the pact also. They are helping individuals in our community be self-sufficient, kinda like what Time for Change is doing, helping people set their own salaries, their own schedules for the work that they want to do. That's the kinda, we're heading that way. You know, people work from home remotely, and there's people that are not used to a nine-to-five job, Monday to Friday. So I commend the work you're doing, but like I said, these are not all the beds that we have in the city, and that's because there's nonprofits getting money from private funders, only serving their clients and not the people in our city who need the help. So just know that, there's more beds out there, but we don't know who they are. I sent an email to the ICH, you'll probably see it later on, that we should do a, for any of those nonprofits applying for funds or trying to seek funds from any government agency, there should be a questionnaire and a question in there saying, do you abide by all the rules and regulations of the jurisdiction you're in? I don't know if that's part of their applications currently, but that's something that I saw under another, the benevolity causes online, that's one of the questions they asked. So, thank you for all you're doing. Residents in the Paris Hill Park neighborhood are very happy and thankful for the work that our staff is doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, and then Councilmember Alexander. Your mic.
Just some, couple of closing comments, and I'll be quick. The first thing I wanna say is, this council and mayor can be proud of the staff you have here. I mean, absolutely outstanding people, they're working hard. Cassandra and her team, particularly with respect to the partnerships that they are forming to help solve this problem, work with it. The Public Works Department, Ernesto, the Police Department, Park and Rec, I mean, you have some outstanding people here who are stepping up and making a difference here. The only thing I would ask your help on, as you're a city manager, interim city manager, is the one thing I tell them is that failure is not an option on this, we will get this done, but they have one request of me is, and that is, city manager, on some of these things, we need support and dollar support, 'cause the cost. And my comment to them is, you let me know what you need, and I'll go fight for you and get the council support to back these things. So I will be asking the council for help in doing that, so we can do our job.
Thank you.
And I do have a recommendation, Mr. City Manager, if we can open discussions with the county. I know they were offering three million dollars towards our navigation center, seventy-four million dollars that they're putting towards homelessness, twenty million alone is on a resource center called Pacific Village, it's not built yet. It seems to me that it's a duplication of efforts without the actual housing component around it, I'm not sure, I don't have the details, I tried searching on their website, I couldn't find it. But can they actually put that money into the navigation center in our city? That could be something that we can have that conversation with them on.
And I will tell you that, in the short time I've been here, I've had several discussions with the county exec, and he's very willing to work with us, is eager, and I think we're forming a good partnership to work together. So I think you'll see more benefits from that as we go forward.
That'd be good, 'cause we are the county seat, and I think Redlands got twenty-five million from them. So it'd be nice to get those twenty million on our side. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Alexander?
Yes, thank you. Good job, I appreciate you and what your team has accomplished in this short amount of time. It is really remarkable, and the residents will thank you, and I thank you for what you have done. Well done. But I have a quick question. Councilmember Ibarra brought out that county facility, that's within, I know it's on county property, but it's in the city, so we can't use those numbers, because that's a place that they house individuals too, so we can't use those numbers? 'Cause once they walk off that property, they become San Bernardino city issue. So is there any way we can use that, those numbers?
Are we talking about Pacific Village?
Yep.
Yeah, so actually, I was in discussions with the county, because, is it the city of San Bernardino, or is it borderline Highland?
It's the city of San Bernardino, if it's Pacific.
Okay.
Right.
Okay, because actually, we can count those numbers. So they are providing interim housing, and they're also providing, they're moving forward phase two of transitional housing. So we can count the interim housing portion, and so like I say, that three hundred and eighty-seven, we know there's more out there. But for some reason, they're not on the COC's list, I'm not exactly sure why, so it doesn't matter. We know that it's a county facility, we know that it's vetted, and so the numbers will actually go up, which will help our city bring down the shelter bed burden, it won't be so difficult on us.
Right, that's why I wonder, we can use those numbers as well.
And I also wanted to add something in regards to the county. Yes, the county did allocate seventy-two point two million dollars towards homeless-related projects, but I want the council members to know that there's twenty million dollars still on the table, and that's completely set aside from the three million that they're giving us, right? There's twenty million dollars, I on my end am reaching out to the county, the Office of Home Services, to say, what do I need to do to get the attention that the city needs, those additional funds? And I would implore council also, and the mayor, if you could, connect with county boards and supervisors, letting them know that we're moving forward with our project, and we definitely need some of those additional funds. There's twenty million that's set for cities in particular who want to either develop affordable housing projects, emergency shelters, or navigation centers, so we fall in that category.
Great. Another question, now that we're doing that, and you brought up the Police Department, how are we dealing with those mentally challenged, or those who are actually committing small petty crimes? I get that from my residents a lot. I get that, they said at the last meeting, I have not forgotten that, and the police are not here to answer that, so I don't know, who do I give, or who we give direction to, to start enforcing the small, I don't like to call them small crimes, but the people that drop their pants, walk around nude, you know, urinate in public, all those things are crimes, and we need to address those issues too. You cannot let those go unenforced when there are children around, because I hear it from my residents at the parks and on the sidewalks from my business owners. All that is crucial as well. You wanna invite in people from community economic development and bring businesses in, but yet we have folks walking around with no drawers on. So are we directing our Police Department to enforce those type of issues as well? And I know that's not to you, that's to your office, sir, because those kinda issues need to be addressed simultaneously or in parallel what we're doing here.
The mic, City Manager, can you turn on your mic, please?
No, I say both of them are my offices, not just this one, but police as well. And yes, to your second question, we are addressing that, that's why I said to you earlier, and the team that we put together includes police, it includes Public Works and Code Enforcement. So we're going after those things as well, that's part of our plan.
Thank you.
Yes, Mayor Protem?
Just one more quick question to, the number, six hundred and eleven total needed, or needed, three hundred and eighty-seven active shelter. My point is, I lost track of all the numbers, you kept adding numbers. We're gonna exceed this number based on what you reported tonight, and I mean, so we're gonna go over the six-eleven. Right? Or at least that's what it sounded like.
So that six-eleven number is good for the fiscal year 2023, 'cause remember, every year, we have an annual point-in-time count. So, you know, let's say in 2024, in January, at the next point-in-time count, our homeless numbers could go up, that's...
They could go down, if locals do.
Well, they could go up, but what's going to assist us is, like Councilmember Alexander said, being able to get the shelter beds from the county, finding out other shelter operators, even if they're not receiving state and federal funding, but as long as they're licensed and permitted, and we can vet them out that they are a reputable agency, you know, that they're really providing quality service, we'll count them into our inventory list, and that just brings our burden down.
It does sound like, again, all the numbers that you rattled off, sounds like the two hundred and twenty-four beds needed at this point in time.
We'll meet it.
We will meet that fairly easily, it sounds like.
Yes, absolutely.
With what you've got going.
Yes, absolutely.
Councilmember Alexander?
I'm sorry. We clean out the parks, we invest a lot of our taxpayer dollars, how do we stop them from re-engaging in camping there again? How do we do that?
So that's the whole point of us meeting the shelter bed threshold capacity, so that we can actually begin enforcement, that's, we're not enforcing anything. And so right now, we can clear out a park, they'll turn around and come right back. Once we can enforce, and that changes the game, whether we go administrative-wise, or citation-wise, or criminal-wise, however we do the enforcement, that will make it so that it's clear with signage, with postage, so that people are fully aware, parks are shut down at eight o'clock, you can't stay the night, or no, you cannot set up a house or a home or whatever here in the park. You can enjoy the park, the park is free, whether you're housed or you're unhoused, but you just cannot live in the park. And that's, we're not there yet, but we're gonna get there when we establish the interim shelter beds.
Now, we, Madam City Attorney, didn't we empower our security to, didn't we empower our security officers to make arrests or do something?
Mr. City Attorney, are you looking, uh, Mr. City Manager?
I don't know the, yeah, I don't know the answer about security guards, but one of the things that we've been talking about in our task force meetings is the difference between enforcing homeless and anti-camping rules and enforcing the law generally. So as, as Mr. C referred to, if the rules are that you can't be in a park after dark, then that applies to everyone, whether you're homeless or not, and it doesn't matter whether we have a shelter for these people to go to. If you can't be in a park after dark, then you can cite them, and you can make them leave. The trade-off to that is where do they go? So if they're less visible to the community, if they're sleeping in the park, they're also doing damage to the facilities and all this good work that you've just heard about, we have to then accept the reality, they will go somewhere else, whether that's into a flood control channel, whether that's into a sidewalk, whether that's into a commercial facility. And so I think in our task force, that's something we're discussing right now, is it's basically those trade-offs. So, but I wanna make it clear, the city can enforce its laws, and if it has a law that says the park is closed at dark and you need to get out, it can send both its security guards and its law enforcement officers into those parks and move people out.
So we can send security? 'Cause I don't wanna see our Police Force, which is already burdened already, doing something that we pay security to do.
And I only was looking at staff, because I don't know what the situation is with security guards being hired to police the parks, I don't know that.
We're looking at, but one of the opportunities I think we have is to expand the security so that we don't lock up our Police Department, some critical service responsibilities that they have. So all these things on the table, our desire is to come back to you with a comprehensive proposal, but that's why we're meeting right now, to look at all those things.
Mayor, I apologize about you. One more time.
If I may, additionally, in the interim, we have identified a budget in an existing agreement where we will be enforcing park hours at Paris Hill.
Thank you. Councilmember?
Yeah, just really, one more thing, and I think, Cassandra, you might be able to answer this, or anybody might that's got some evidence or history on exactly what the city attorney was talking about, and that is, that once we start enforcing that, we kick them out of a park or whatever, we can do that legally and with compassion and just the right, the appropriate, proper way to do it. And so they go somewhere else. Isn't it true that if we make it uncomfortable enough for people, that they will finally say, you know, I think we're gonna go somewhere else completely?
Yeah, that is very...
I mean, isn't that, isn't that evidence of that?
That is very true, and it's unfortunate to say, but what's gonna probably happen is, so that individuals do not feel like they are harassed, or they know that the city is cracking down on its enforcement, they're gonna go to neighboring cities that do not have the infrastructure in place to have people move out of their parks or move out of public spaces. Or they will move into areas that are less visible, and that's where they go to the riverbeds and places where you don't see. But yeah, usually, they tend to either move along or get out of visible sight.
Right, and this is, we're doing this for our citizens here with compassion for these people that need and want the help, we're gonna do that and try to give it to them, and if they don't, if they can't accept it or don't accept it, then it's gonna become uncomfortable for them in the city of San Bernardino, and I think that's the message we should send.
Councilmember, we're actually helping not only the unhoused, because we're providing services, we're not just saying, get out of here, we don't want you, we're actually connecting them to viable services. And then we're helping our house, because we're restoring our public spaces so that everybody can enjoy the parks and whatever, you know.
Thank you. Again, staff, thank you, thank you, thank you, each and every one of you for working together effectively, collaboratively, and that is key, all hands on deck. So City Manager, very well done by having a task force amongst a team. This is great. So we do need to have a motion in a sec...
Second. Oh, second.
Wait, who's gonna motion? Okay. Mayor Protem Sharette, motion, second by Councilmember...
Figueroa.
Figueroa. Can we call for the votes?
Councilmember Sanchez.
Yes.
Councilmember Ibarra.
Yes.
Councilmember Figueroa.
Yes.
Mayor Protem.
Yes.
Councilmember Calvin.
Yes.
Councilmember Alexander.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
I do wanna add, say that what you guys need to address these efforts, bring it forward, we'll support you, know that, so thank you.
And thank the council for your support.
You're welcome. Okay, we now move to mayor and council updates. Last week, I started with Councilmember Alexander, this week, I'm gonna start with Councilmember Sanchez.
I know it was last Sunday, but Happy Mother's Day, Mom, I love you, and you're probably not watching this, but I'll let you know that I said this, all right? So Happy Mother's Day, I love you, bye.
Councilmember Ibarra?
Yes, this past two weeks, I was able to attend the Paris Hill Park Valencia Neighborhood Association meeting, our City Manager joined us, and our new Eastern District Commander or Lieutenant joined us, John Etcheverria, I'm very glad that he's going to serve the Eastern District. It was a very well, robust communication, residents were very happy to get the updates from our City Manager at that meeting. Thank you, Mr. City Manager, for showing up last minute. And then I attended the Muscopiabi Neighborhood Association as well on Thursday last week. They had members of the Coast Team present and talk about their also, their efforts of, you know, reaching out to our unhoused residents and trying to get them the help that they need as well. So it was, it was an all-around nice two meetings that we've had in the neighborhood. And I encourage anybody who lives in the San Bernardino Neighborhood Association, and it's not in my district anymore, but the Bryce Haynes Park Neighborhood Association south of baseline, get involved in your neighborhood associations, that's how you find out how to make certain reports with the city, you get updates from city staff from time to time, so it's good for you to get connected with your neighbors and city and our elected officials, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Figueroa?
Thank you, I didn't really have any announcements, but I will say thank you, a big thank you to Lieutenant Flores for his time and his leadership in the Western District. So he always committed so much of his time, his energy was always responsive, and he did so much work with many of the residents and neighborhood associations on the western part of the city as well. So I just wanted to say a big thank you, I know he's moving on to doing something else, but I certainly just wanted to say thank you to him for all the work that he's done for the Western, especially the Rancho West Neighborhood Association, they're very grateful for him, so that's all.
Thank you. Councilmember? Mayor Protem?
I didn't come in with any real announcements tonight, but I was asked to make one announcement, that there's a community cleanup Saturday, June 3rd, eight AM to eleven AM, and the people will be gathering, I would say probably a little before, eight in the morning at Calvary Chapel at fourteen ninety-nine, that's one-four-nine-nine East Baseline, the contact there is Barbara, yeah, it does say, it says come at seven-thirty AM for coffee and refreshments, Calvary Chapel on Baseline, phone number nine-zero-nine-three-eight-one-five-three-five-three. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Calvin?
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate that. I would just piggyback on Councilmember Figueroa's comment about Lieutenant Eddie Flores moving on to something greater within San Bernardino PD, but our being able to welcome back Lieutenant, newly promoted to Lieutenant John Etcheverria, who will be coming back to the Western District, so we're really, really grateful about that. He gets to come home, and Councilmember Figueroa and Councilmember Sanchez and I attended Coffee with a Cop, where we received that information this past week. Attended the San Bernardino Food Fest, that was a great event. Habitat for Humanity did a fundraiser, we attended Make Hope Happen Gala, Councilmember Alexander and...
We attended Make Hope Happen Gala, Councilmember Alexander and Mayor, and Councilmember Figueroa. I attended the Pacific High School Grand Opening, groundbreaking ceremony today with Mayor Tram. They are embarking on a new biomedical technology center right here in the community, so that means that our youth are going to continue to be inspired and working on careers right there when they're in high school, so that's something wonderful. Tonight, our application process is closing for our very first youth council, and I just can't say enough of Cory and the entire team, thank you guys, and I hope your interview processes are going well. I want to say thank you to Public Works, because I see them, I stopped some folks today, every time I see them in my community, I always pull over, sometime get a quick pic. They were doing some potholes, but they were also doing some graffiti, so thank you, Ms. Sherrill in the back, Ms. Sherrill, Ms. Val. I'm sometimes a little bit lazy, I will call them and say, hey, could you put in a CRM request for me? And I appreciate it, they always do it, so thank you guys so very much for, for doing that for us, we appreciate it. Sometimes it's just, we're just a little bit busy. But Neighborhood Association, Wildwood, I attended their plant sale, that was real, real fun. So you guys got to come out to when they have in the plant sales in the city and pick up a few plants to support them. And of course, the neighborhood, I'm sorry, the Northwest PAC Community Meeting, that meets on the first Monday of the month, so thank you guys, we appreciate all of you coming out too, community.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Alexander?
Thank you, Mayor. Once again, Happy belated Mother's Day to all the mothers out there. If you have your mother with you, please cherish her, she's, she's special. I attended the SB Food Fest, along with, I think everybody on the council showed up to SB Food Fest, so that was an outstanding event, and well done to Louis Ojeda and his team. Like Councilmember Calvin said, we're at Making Hope Foundation, and what Making Hope Foundation is, it supports San Bernardino City Unified Students, is what it does, that's what their money goes to. So when we're supporting that, that's what we're supporting, we're supporting the scholars of the city of San Bernardino, so we were there supporting that. On May 13, I attended the San Bernardino Valley Chapter of the LINKS 45th Annual Scholarship Breakfast. At this breakfast with the LINKS presented scholarships, they presented $50,000 in scholarships to youth in one setting. That's an enormous amount of money in scholarships to our youth. So congratulations. On May 16, I was with Coffee with the Cop with Councilmember Sharette, we were there doing Coffee with the Cop. We lost Lieutenant Etcheverria, but we gained Lieutenant Luna, so congratulations, Lieutenant Luna, and welcome to the team. Today, Dignity Health, Mountain View Cemetery, there was a luncheon for all those who have served in our military. I went there and had lunch with those who have served in our military at Dignity Health Mountain View Cemetery. Also, the Salvation Army had a prayer vigil, or not a prayer vigil, but a prayer for the homeless and the unsheltered today at front of City Hall, I was there along with the mayor, and we, we supported the Salvation Army on that event. May 20 is Community Dump Day at Suckum Lake, so be there from 8 to 11, is that the right hours, 8 to 11, Community Dump Day? I think so. And finally, Southern California Areas of Government, which we are, we won an award, the city of San Bernardino won an award for its sustainability. They won this award, again, San Bernardino is winning awards for doing the best that they can do and doing outstanding work, so Ms. Emily Burnell wrote this award, so I must give her a shout out and the staff, well done, Emily. And once again, the staff is doing a great job, the city is doing a great job, and this is the highest honor that the Southern California Areas of Government hands out to a city, the highest, and our city won. So congratulations to the city of San Bernardino, well done. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Okay, I wanted to announce for Councilmember Reynoso, today is his birthday, and he is not here because he is celebrating this special day with his family, so I just want to make sure I announce that and give him a big shout out, let's wish him a happy, happy birthday. I also want to wish my father a happy birthday, his birthday was yesterday, so wish my father a happy birthday. May you, Councilmember, on the award skag, that was, we really made loud noises on the stage together, and so we rocked the house on that. I did want to commend the Parks Department, Liddy and your staffer, Kristen McLean, for the CID prom I attended, 15th Annual, wow. I encouraged my colleagues to attend next year's, it was so beautiful, and, and they were so happy, and community members are so happy to have that type of programs for their family members, their children to be part of in that program all in itself, so thank you. I did attend the Coffee with the Cop recently in downtown, Studio D, a huge shout out to the Police Department, specifically to Lieutenant Odenorf and Officer McKenna, they are doing a great job, having a little more police presence, so thank you, City Manager, you and the chief, really bringing more presence, a safety, feeling safe in downtown, the businesses do appreciate that, so thank you for recognizing the development downtown and having that safety presence. And tomorrow, I will be attending the City-County Conference at Lake Arrowhead, I'm not sure if any of my colleagues are attending with, I know there's a couple of staff members are attending, so I'll be there to really engage with the county and our other cities that are, will be attending. Upcoming events this weekend, Muscubiabi and Blair Park Neighborhood Association will be hosting their first family gala at Davidson Elementary School from 10 to 12 PM, hope to see you there, I'll be there with my kids. And then the water safety challenge at the Jerry Lewis Center at Perris Hill Park from 12 to 2, I'll be there too, so hope to see you all there. That's it for me. Okay, we are going to adjourn the meeting at 10:27 PM. The next joint regular meeting of the mayor and city council, and the mayor and city council acting as the successor agency to the redevelopment agency will be held on June 7, 2023, at the Feltime Central Library located at 555 West Sixth Street, San Bernardino, California, 92401. Closed session will begin at 5:30, open session will begin at 7:00 PM. Good night, everyone.